We'll call the order to the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, November 12th. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knopf?
Here.
Chansett?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley? Uer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And McFadden?
Here.
All right, we have the necessary quorum for business. Second up would be a reminder to speak into the microphone for the BATV recording. Third would be approval of minutes from October 22nd, 2019. Any changes, corrections? A motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by McFadden, second by Salvati. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Should say opposed. Now the motion. Okay, we'll move on to items removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything this evening? No changes. Next up will be matters from the public for items not on the agenda tonight. To reflect Alderman, Malley is here. We have 14. Nothing from the public? Okay, we'll move on then to the consent agenda. Alderman, McFadden, you want to read it?
Sure. The consent agenda?
I'm sorry. Right here, I can hear you. Yeah. Alderman, Callahan's here. Oh, Callahan.
I'm here too.
Just used to you not being here. I know. You just don't talk anymore. Okay, I'm just gonna stop tonight. Hey. You want me to read it? Chansett's always here. Okay, the only thing on the consent agenda tonight is item A, Resolution 19H-115-R. Accepting a plat of dedication for a portion of Geese Road. Motion by Chansett, second by Knopf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are now done with the consent agenda. Next up, we'll open the public hearing on the 2020 budget for public comment. Anybody here to comment on the budget? Move forward and use the microphone. And all we need is your name.
Good evening. My name is Bob McQuillan, and I'd like to thank the committee for allowing me to speak this evening. I wanted to make some comments on the budget. I am passing around a copy of the comments that I'm making, so it might be easier to follow along. If you have any questions at the end, you can ask me on them. But basically, as I reviewed the budget, we have a $30 million budget with a $2 million deficit, and I'm rounding some of the numbers up, with a reserve of 13 million, 13.6 million. If you look at the revenue, the revenue has increased 2.4 million versus the 2017 actual, which is an average of about $800,000 a year. 1.3 million of that increase was in property taxes. And we have lost $800,000 in sales tax fees and services since 2017. The expenses have increased 2.7 million versus that same budget, which is an average of $700,000 a year, or, I'm sorry, $900,000 a year. And this is also a 9.7% increase. As you look at the projections out in this budget that is proposed, in 2021, revenues are expected to increase by 200,000. But expenses are expected to increase by 600,000. In 2022, the revenue will get increased by 200,000, but expenses go up by 700,000. 2023, revenues go up 400,000, expenses go up 700,000. And in 2024, the revenue goes up 400,000 and the expense is 700,000. So we are definite looking at deficit spending and planned deficit spending over the next four years. Also, video gaming. The budget for 2020 is $75,000 as revenue. So that's really a very small amount compared to the overall revenue. We really can't expect a whole lot of money from video gaming. The pension costs, which are a little surprising, there are $3.3 million between both the police and the fire department. And I was wondering where does the city stands on the percent of the pensions that are funded? I know in past years, some of the cities got into trouble by not funding the pensions, and now all of a sudden they're having to catch up. So I don't know if we're 80% funded or 60% funded. Doesn't really say that in the budget. My next concern is the Business Development Department. In the budget, it talks about a business registration program which is scheduled to offset the costs of the new Economic Development Manager. Is the city going to charge local businesses to cover the expense of the new position? It's kind of hypocritical to say that you're going to do more and better things to conduct business in the city, and then you charge the local businesses for it. So I don't understand what that program is, the registration program. And then you're also planning to use economic consultants for specific businesses to go out and target them. Why? Shouldn't the new manager have experience in targeting all types of businesses? Why would you hire someone who is supposed to be your Economic Development Manager, and he doesn't have experience in going out and looking for, I'd say a mattress store, but we have enough of those already, but some kind of business that we're targeting, supermarket, whatever it might be? I don't see the need for an economic consultant. You're just paying somebody that you should really be doing in-house. And the salary in this department has increased from 718,000 to 885,000 in three years. And the overall expenses increased 400,000 in the same period. And I'm just wondering, what are the tangible new businesses that we get from this money that we invested in this department? And also, I know that this new manager isn't supposed to come on until next fiscal year, mid-next fiscal year, but how is that person going to be evaluated? If he doesn't bring in any businesses in or any additional revenue in, is he going to be let go? Or is he going to be continued to go on and on? Is he going to have a target of bringing, okay, you need to bring in $50,000 in additional revenue in sales tax? Or 300,000? There doesn't seem to be any evaluation there. And I think that's sometimes where we get into a problem. We get these new staff positions in, there's no way to evaluate them. Or no way to terminate them, I guess would be the best way to say it, if they're not doing the job. Engineering, as I looked at it, $150,000 in wage increase over the last three years, and total expenses increased 170,000. I think we should be asking why. The public properties and services went from a million to 2.4 million in expenses over three years. And again, why? Maybe there's something I don't understand there. Utility billing, I know we're trying to go online for payments, and I do online myself, and it's fantastic. It's automatically taken out. And can't we incentivize the residents to do it online? And if we do that, then can we either outsource the actual mailing of the bills to people that need to mail it and pay by check? And kind of cut down that staff? Either outsource it completely or cut down the staff there? I'm looking for ways to save money in the budget. And, you know, that's one of the ways. Also, overtime and double time in the police and fire and the streets departments totaled $687,500 in the proposed budget. I can understand the extra money in the streets department because you really can't figure out what the plowing needs might be, and the cost of salt and those things. But why the overtime in the police and fire? Are we potentially underfunded in those departments and we're giving overtime, whereas we could staff up there and save some cost of overtime? And having a staff person in there that costs less than paying somebody overtime? I think that should be looked at. My last comment is on the reserve amount. The reserve amount for any taxing body always baffles me. To have millions of dollars in surplus means that someone or some group was overcharged. That's the only way you can have a surplus. Since in most cases, property tax is the biggest revenue line item, it means that property owners have been overtaxed, maybe over a number of years. Now I have read that there is or will be a new proposal to use 1.7 million in the reserves for improvements to City Hall. Why not rebate some of the 13.6 million in reserves back to the property owners who actually paid the money? It appears that there might be a plan over the next four years, as the proposed budget states, that through 2024, we're calling for deficit spending, which I just spoke about. Or is the plan not to rebate property owners, but to continue to increase city spending? If you're already looking out three or four years and you're saying, we're going to have less revenues than expenses, well then you seriously need to look at cutting expenses as opposed to going into deficit spending. Again, biggest cost is going to be staffing, and need to take a hard look at the number of people that are working for the city and what their jobs are. Can we condense some things, whatever, in the future? I'm going to leave the council members with this thought. Sometimes the goal of city staff does not match the goal of city residents. You, as elected members of the council, are charged with meeting the goals of the residents. And I'm a guy, for 20-some years I lived in Geneva and always spoke to the school board about their spending and how they should cut their spending. No one listened. And everything that I had said turned out true over 10-year period, and now people are saying, Bob, I wish that we would have listened to you. We didn't think you knew what you're talking about. I understand budgets. I've worked with them for 40 years. When you're looking at a proposed deficit spending budget for four more years, you've got to do something. You can't say, okay, we'll just spend down the money. Because you don't know if that's actually going to happen. You don't know what money you're really going to have. It's a crapshoot. We all know that on a budget, when you go out and project for three or four or five years. But you have to plan for that. And right now, you're planning for deficit spending, which could be really, really a big problem in this city. Okay, thank you for your time. I'm willing to answer any questions if you might have them.
We should go through and probably try to answer some of these that are fairly simple because I think some of the stuff is in the budget. You might not have been able to find it, but I think that some of the things are there. Pension costs, I think, is the first one that comes to my mind, is in there. I don't recall the exact number, page seven. And it is in there. And where are we percentage-wise?
We are... Police.
Page 17? General Fund? It's actually page introduction 16.
Pardon?
Introduction 16.
Oh, okay. It also is on page seven with the numbers. The police are at 54 and fire is at 66. And we have always funded at 100% of the actuarial recommendation. Right. The last few years, we've added some to each of the levy to make sure that we're trying to catch up. Not catch up, but catch up because of investments, not because we haven't funded as we were told.
My question area is 54 and 66, are they good numbers?
They are pretty much in line with all of the other cities' pensions funds.
That wasn't my question. My question was, are they good numbers? I don't really care what other cities are doing. I'm concerned about our firemen and policemen.
So one of the things that the safety pension funds run up against is that they're not allowed to invest their money in the same way that a private 401K is allowed to invest. And so there is only a limited amount that can be invested in, you know, the typical money market type of investments. And so that is one of the things that has made it difficult for public sector pensions to keep up pace with the, what they need to pay to the recipients of those.
Okay.
But I just, I do want to add that we always fund at 100% of what the actuarial recommendations are, and we look to see if the assumptions that the actuary is using should be modified. And I'm not really sure what direction you're saying that we should change.
Well, I mean, not to be ignorant, but I don't know what 100% of actuarial recommendations are, and I don't know how many committee members know that either.
We distribute the actuarial report each year. We hire an outside independent actuary who is registered with the state of Illinois to prepare the evaluation. And they look at all of our pensioners and their age, and all of the current employees and their age, and project out how much we should be funding in the next year for meeting the funding target.
Based on what the retirement would be, if four or five people are retiring, and you're going to have to pay out that much more than you're currently paying?
That's correct. And also, under state law, we have an obligation to be 90% funded by the year 2040. And so that factors into the actuarial calculation as well.
Okay. Got you. Thank you.
And then some of the other items on here, economic development and community development were combined, but the increase in the salaries is related to hiring a building inspector. We added a building inspector at the end of 2018. And so that increased salaries there. And then there is some increase in contracted services. I'll let Laura address what the intention of that is.
So the economic, in the Economic Development Manager position, of course, they will be given targets and held to performance standards because, and not only is that position expected to bring business into the city of Batavia, but they're also expected to take measures to make sure that we retain our most important businesses as well, because we don't want to lose businesses through attrition either. There's a lot on that person's plate. And there are some high-ticket type of businesses that we could attract to our municipalities, such as a car dealership or a hotel. And therefore, the thought there in terms of hiring a consultant is that by putting in a minimal investment, allowing somebody to 100% target all of their activity toward gaining that high-ticket type of business to our city, that that would be a win for us, while this Economic Development Manager has a very broad spectrum of responsibilities and would only be able to dedicate a certain amount, percentage of their efforts toward that.
Laura, and just to add to that, too, so if you're hiring someone like that, you're hiring someone that's specialized in that particular vertical.
I understand.
You're hiring for the role.
They have those relationships already.
Yeah.
I understand that, but again, I think we should be targeting somebody to go into that position that has a cross-sectional experience in doing that.
I don't disagree with you.
Nor do I.
And, you know, not to knock anybody, because I don't know exactly what was happening, but, you know, the old language of a consultant is, everybody else's retirement fund. That's how, you know, he gets his retirement fund by being a consultant. And I don't like having consultants personally, because I don't think they can be managed as well as if you had your own employee, because they're actually independent contractors.
And one of the things is that the city of Batavia, I think, has had a very good experience with its recent economic development consultant, too. Through his efforts and through the contacts that he has made throughout his career, has brought us a $45 million opportunity for our downtown. So I think it really, it depends upon which consultant that you hire, you know? And so, and it also is incumbent upon the staff members who are managing that consultant to make sure that the city gets the value for what they pay for that consultant.
Can you explain what the business registration program is?
Yes. Many other municipalities have a business registration program, and it is for, so that the city knows what business each business is engaged in. I look in the news over the last year, and I see towns like Willowbrook and the Sterigenics case that they faced, where they were unaware of the types of processes that were happening inside business as well. We just made an enormous investment in our wastewater treatment facility. I think it's important that we know what types of businesses businesses are engaged in, so we know what type of effluent is coming back to the wastewater treatment plant. From the safety of our fire department and our police department, when they are entering a business, to know what type of business people are engaged in. And I can say that on a weekly basis, when people are looking to locate their business in the city of Batavia, they ask, I've looked at your website, and I cannot figure out where is it that I register my business? And so...
I was just going to throw in, I don't think, you're commenting here about it offsetting the cost of the business. That's not the purpose.
No, it's not the purpose.
Well, it's right in the budget.
Well, that's a lot, that person should be offsetting themselves with sales. Period.
Right.
So, I mean, the reason for the registration is, I mean, it can cover some of the costs, but really, to Laura's point, so we know who's in this town.
Well, I guess my question then is, there going to be a cost for a business to register?
That's the question.
Yes, because it will take, it will take, we'll have to spend time to administer the process. So the cost of the registration will be to offset the administrative costs of maintaining that program.
Doesn't make sense to me. If I'm a business and you're saying I'm going to, as Batavia, we've been told that it's more difficult to deal with us on a business level, and now you're going to say we're going to help you guys businessmen, but it's going to be $500 to register in Batavia? That's not a good feel for me.
I don't think it's going to be nearly that much, and I do think that it is an advantage for a city to know about all of the different types of businesses that it has within its borders. So for instance, I would be able to tell you if you are the fifth or the 12th card store, you know, that is located in the city of Batavia. I think that would be very helpful to people who are bringing in businesses. And we don't know that right now.
As a business guy, I'm very concerned that the city doesn't already have that information. You already have an Economic Development Department, so why wasn't that person going out and saying, we have 18 restaurants, and these are the restaurants. Here's what your competition's going to be, Mr. Restaurant, if you come in. Here's where they're located. We have 18 manufacturing facilities, and this is what they do. I mean, I think that should have already been done.
I agree with you.
So I...
It's being done.
Yeah.
The course is being corrected.
And I guess the only other thing, really, overtime's going to be overtime. But the utility billing, I really see that a lot of, not only cities, but municipalities, but businesses are outsourcing that kind of thing. And if we could do that, that would help offset the deficit spending that we're already planning to do. To a point. I mean, now, you know, I just read the report that was out on the agenda tonight, that they saved $50,000 when you went through and tried to make cuts. $50,000 on a $30 million budget is nothing. I mean, $200,000 cuts on a $30 million budget, I would say, okay, let's do that. Again, in business, I had sales goals. When I started off the year, they asked me what my goal was, what I was going to sell, what my expenses were going to be. And we always lowered our sales goals and inflated our expenses. And I kind of see that kind of happening here. And if we inflate our expenses just to cover ourselves, let's get more realistic and let's cut our expenses. That's the only thing we can do. Okay? Thanks, guys.
Any other questions?
I'm just going to address a couple other things you had in here. For engineering, you asked why there was an increase in salaries from 2017 to 2020. In 2017, there was an extended vacancy in the department, so the salaries were abnormally low that year.
Okay.
And then for utility billing, we have a supervisor and two employees in that department, and they prepare the bills. And someone still needs to calculate and prepare the bills. And we could outsource the taking of payments, but we would still need someone to prepare and send out the bills and monitor the accounts receivable.
I would disagree with that. I think that they could also prepare the bills, too. It's a software program.
Yes. That could be. I disagree, but...
Many people have disagreed with me.
Someone needs to look at the meter reading and make sure that the meter reading is going out appropriately. And there would be a larger cost to that than what we currently pay our employees for that.
My last comment. A lot of cities don't read the meters anymore. They only send someone out if there's a customer that complains.
We did put in new automated meters where they can be read once they're walking or driving by, but remote read meters are very expensive, and we chose not to put those in.
I guess I'll address one of them, too, here, that I think at the end of this, Bob talks about the 1.7 million from reserves to cover City Hall. It also includes the roof at the Public Works Garage.
No, it doesn't.
Oh, that's not in there?
Well, the cost of just the renovations for this building is 1.7 over two years.
Okay, over the two years.
But the Public Works roof is in the capital fund.
Okay, so it was in the capital. And I think a lot of what ends up in our reserves, at least in my feeling, where we built that up, is when we moved money that we haven't spent, and it's in there over a year or two, and then it gets spent on something else that we have planned in capital that it's going to get spent for. And we don't use reserves to run daily operations, or we haven't in the past.
And there is one other thing. On the public properties and services, that department was modified earlier this year, if you recall. Gary Home came to the city council and talked about separating out public properties from the street division. And so that was separated out. And the departments are 1016 and 1045 in our budget. And the spending in streets and sanitation, you can see, goes down in 2020. In 2018, it was 3.3 million, and in 2020, it will be 2.8 million. So that has decreased to offset some of the increases in 1016.
Anybody else from the public want to comment on the budget tonight during the public hearing? Not? Any motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by Uer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Public hearing is closed. And now to ordinance 19-80, proposing the establishment of a special service area, number 42, for the Nagel Industrial Park, UD Farmstead, number 3, Fabian Parkway and Nagel Boulevard. You want to take that, Scott?
Yep, go ahead. Yes, this is an SSA that we actually created back in 2000, but for some reason, it never was recorded, and so it never became a valid SSA. We had some conversations between our engineering department and the original developer of this subdivision, and talked about how do we restore this SSA, or how do we restore funding? Because per the original agreements and in the declaration of the association, the city is supposed to be receiving 45% of the maintenance cost of the detention pond that is located at the south end of this property.
that is located at the south end of this property. So after discussions that we had with the, the original developer, because they really aren't actively managing the, the association, I always felt that the best way to do this was to reactivate the special service area with an active levy that would pay for the 45% that is supposed to be coming from, from the Nagel subdivision. So this information that we have in front of you tonight would be the way that we would start the special service area. This first ordinance is a proposing ordinance, which would then set a public hearing date, I believe, of January 20th of 2020, and then the public would be able to comment on that, whether or not they have issues with, with what's being proposed. And, and then the city council would then vote on an ordinance to establish the special service area or not. If there is the vote to establish it, certainly the property owners, 51%, can file a petition to object to it, and then if that happens, then the SSA does not happen. But the only reason for this SSA was to maintain the detention basin that's located at the end of Nagel Boulevard, that's this little triangular, or rectangular area here at the bottom, the city owns, and we are maintaining that. We've spent a lot of money in the past few years in, in putting in more native plantings and other things that, you know, require less maintenance, but we did not get reimbursed for any of those costs, and we don't anticipate as part of this SSA that we would get reimbursed, but this would just be future maintenance costs for burns and herbicides and those types of things. So that's, that's what's being proposed. Essentially, it's reestablishing an SSA that should have been established back in 2000, but because of some administrative issues, it just didn't happen. Just a quick clarification, perhaps it's just a typo, but in the ordinance itself, the third paragraph down, it refers to this SSA as number 60? Yeah, I'm sorry, I tried to get as many of the original ones out of there, so that is a typo, I will fix that, yes. That was, what it was modeled after.
Is there an association in effect right now, and they're just not managing it?
Technically, there is an association that was formed. The original developer is still the manager of it, but they're really not doing anything with it. They're not levying any dues, or they're not managing anything, other than there's a detention area that's up by the Sitco gas station, there, that's being maintained by the Sitco folks.
Is that how it typically is?
It, every place is a little different, it just depends on, you know, how it's, how it's established. Some places you have the adjacent property owners, some you have an association that's actually maintaining it, some the city's maintaining, so they all vary.
How many property owners are we dealing with?
Uh, there's, I think, well, it's, it's been changing because there's been some land sales, so the land, the vacant land on the east side of Nagel, the areas in here, those recently sold, those were owned by the developer until about a year ago. The developer still owns this lot up at the north end, and then the, the two industrial buildings, spec industrial buildings are on this Lot 2 area, so those are under construction right now. So there's probably about eight different property owners at this point. Sitco Station also is owned by the original developer.
Elliot? Sorry, just one other question then. As I was reading through this, and if I understood it correctly, so covering 45% of this, the 10 cent is what we would need to have.
Correct.
Why is it that we're looking to go in at the 50 cents then, instead?
Yeah, and that's, that's basically modeled after the original special service area ordinance, which is what was, what the 50 cents was going to be, but if we get into some case where we have some extraordinary maintenance costs, or we have to do some type of a, you know, reconstruction of the basin, that would then help cover those costs. So I don't anticipate we didn't, we would levy that unless we have to have some type of special case, and in that case, if we do levy it that much, we would have another public hearing to increase that levy also. And 50 cents is usually a typical special service area levy, just, just general knowledge.
Anybody else have questions? Would you care to make a motion?
No, moved.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, who was second? Uer?
Either one.
Okay. Uer's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up would be Resolution 19-117-R, authorization to bind insurance, coverage for general liability, property and workers' compensation. Alderman Chanzet.
I was going to say, we can just turn this right over to Peggy. Our policy ends at the end of the month, so we do have to act on this tonight.
So this renewal covers our property, our general liability, our excess liability for umbrella coverage, and our excess coverage for workers' compensation. We had quite an increase for the property coverage this year, and that is due to the fact that we added all of the equipment in the new administration building for the wastewater treatment plant. And then, because the liability is based on the total exposure, including the property, that also increased, and there was a general increase for public properties insurance overall. But the difference in property coverage was 17,000, the majority of that was due to the new property, but if you remove that out and look at the insured totals that we had from the prior year, there was a 4% increase in the premium. We did not increase any of our deductibles, including our self-insured retention for workers' comp. So for workers' compensation, we pay the first 700,000 of all claims, that's fairly common for public entities, very difficult to find any coverage with a lower self-insured retention. So the total cost for the premiums is 428,000 compared to 386,000 from the year before. Are there any questions on what this coverage is, or what the changes were for?
The one thing I would ask, how many years is, now that we're going on with Gallagher for?
We did a proposal for services, for brokerage services, four years ago, and so we're now, they were the broker before, but after getting prices from everyone, they, they won with the lowest cost, and so we've continued on with them. We moved from an insurance pool in 2003, so we have been with them for a long time. But it's always good to keep them on their toes and make sure that their pricing is in line, and we will do that again.
Well, if there are no other questions, then I would move that we approve Resolution 19-17-R, authorization to bind insurance.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up will be ordinance 19-78, pending, amending the municipal code relating to water usage rates. Alderman O'Brien?
Yeah, we are looking to amend the municipal code relating to water usage rates. I guess it was five years ago, we had a rate study, and we pretty much maintained that rate study as, I believe the last two years, we even, we were less than what they were recommending us. I think they were recommending us four and a half, and we went with three and a half, something to that effect. But I'll leave it to Gary now to, to cover it, but go ahead, Gary, I'm sorry.
Sure, no problem. Thank you. And in the years that have gone since that rate study was done, we've had really the council's philosophy of using general fund, property taxes to fund stormwater improvements, and with those stormwater improvements in Ward 1 and Area 3, have also come water improvements, water main, water distribution system improvements. I also list on my memo some of the, the major projects that are, that are in the capital improvement plan for water and wastewater. Obviously, on the water side, we're talking about nearing end of life on some of our major treatment plant components, components that were constructed in early to mid 90s, which are now, again, kind of nearing their end of their life. Prairie Street, Main Street, two major roadway construction projects that are now have water associated with them to be reconstructed, Area 3 and Ward 1, as I just mentioned. We also have things out at the treatment plant, like the sludge lagoon reconstruction and the bulk salt handling, which I know we've talked with you about several times. On the wastewater side, if we can just jump into, into that as well, treatment plant, I mean, that's really kind of all that needs to be said, that's $60 million over the next decade. So that, that is, that is a major reinvestment into that facility by the city in order to both expand its capacity as well as address regulatory issues, which are requirements. So we don't really have much choice but to address those issues. We just completed Phase 1, which was 27 million, 26 million in that ballpark, so we're not quite even halfway there yet, and in the next five to seven years, we'll be doing Phases 2 and 3. We're spending another $30 million.
Well, I think with Phase 2, it's about 25 million, 25 to 27 million, and Phase 3 is about, was that 18 million, 16 to 17 million, I believe it was?
Yeah, Phase 3 will be the smallest phase, and the exact phasing, again, in the years since we first put that plan together, we may shift some pieces around, so.
Well, I guess with the water, we're going to, I did take some notes here. So we had it at 3% all the way for the last five years, and we, we had it at 3% for 216 and 217, and 2018, 19 and 20 at 4.5%, and we kept it at 3% of the water rates.
That was basically council's direction back then, yeah.
Right, exactly. And so, but we do have to pay, if, if we look through the budget and we see the construction that's, that's going on with all the water mains, as you had mentioned, I mean, there's an awful lot of improvement going on with infrastructure throughout our city, so. And, and I'll just keep jumping, like you did, to the sewer. It was 6% that was recommended by the municipal financial services in 2015, and it was 6% all the way through the five years, we kept it at 6% to 2018, and 2019 and 20, we kept it at 4%. So, you know, the council was trying to control the rates and control, control costs, but I think now with what you said with the wastewater treatment, that, that's a big bubble we have to cover, so. I didn't mean to dominate that, but does anyone have any, any questions or comments? Joe?
Got a number of questions. My first instinct when I saw this was, we're asking for an increase because we've always asked for an increase. Go back in the book and find the justifications. So I did that, because I know people like Bob and other citizens of this town want the justification. And if I know the justification, I can go to somebody like Bob and explain it to them. I go through and I look in the appendix section for the projects you've got listed for the water department, and I see in each one of those where the utility rate increases are covering the cost of each one of those capital projects. They all balance out, they've got timelines, they've got details as to what's going on. While as a consumer, I don't like price increases, I see where the money's going, and I can very easily go to my neighbors and tell them this is what it's going for. I switch over to the sewer side, I don't see the same level of detail. I see some vagueness, I don't see, other than one, there's only one of the projects where it calls out utility rates or reserves being used in 2020 in the amount of $75,000, the rest of it is revenue bonds and IEPA loans.
That's for the treatment plant?
Yeah. Right, and that's the wastewater side of it. So like I said, the water side of it, what needs to happen with the water, I don't like it, but I'll, I can go sell that, because that makes sense. I don't see where the 4% sewer increase is applying to any of the capital projects that are outlined in your memo.
So we're going to get EPA loans in order to pay for the project? That $60 million that I'm referencing, we don't have $60 million in the bank. So we will go out and seek low-interest loans, and then the rates, we basically, as a guarantee to repay those loans, we pledge through rates in order to, in order to have the, the revenue coming in to pay back those loans through the EPA.
So does this page need to be updated to reflect that the utilities are covering those costs in the next four years, five years, whatever that is? That's where I can see a disconnect, is it just shows up as the revenue coming from a loan on this sheet. And when I try to use this book to go justify to the voters what we're doing, I'm having trouble. This is my first year doing this.
No, but, but, but the revenue coming from the loan is absolutely correct. I mean, that's where the revenue is coming from, is from the loan. The revenue sources the loan, and then there needs to be a way to pay back that loan, just like you have a car loan, you got to pay it back. That's where the rates come in. They pledge the rates to pay back that loan. The revenue source is not reserves, or, or, or something, the revenue source is the loan. That's how we're paying for the project.
So, and, and that's where I don't see a connection between a 4% rate increase and a $12 million loan revenue coming in. Where do we connect those in here? In this, in, in the whole financing structure? How do those two get connected together? It makes sense, well, yeah, we got to pay for those loans. Where does that show that we're paying for those loans?
That's under the expenditure side, like in the detailed budget, that'd be the, under the expenditure side for the loan payment.
There'll be a line item for the loan payment. Bond and debt, loan. And that should be close to or equal to what the rate increases would be if it was covering that, if the rate increase was covering just that chain.
Right, the rate increase isn't just covering that chain.
Right, it's covering other things.
It's covering other things.
It's covering planned capital.
Right.
And what's a little different about the sewer capital is we have the treatment side, and then we also have the sanitary sewer side, which another superintendent oversees that, and those sheets are under, for instance, Main Street reconstruction and sanitary sewer, for the sewer separation, a portion of the sewer budget is there, and then the same thing for Area 3.
Those, those projects made sense to me. It was when we got specifically to wastewater treatment that I saw a disconnect, and that's when all of my questions came up. With the emails that you saw from me today, I didn't understand it. And to, to tell somebody it's Phase 2 and Phase 3, I went back and tried to find the wastewater master plan from 20, 2008?
2009, yeah.
2009. All I could find was the appendix to it, which was a bunch of graphs, and without words to go tell you what you're looking at, I don't have anything to go look at. So again, I'm trying to sell this budget to the folks in the 4th Ward and sell this rate increase. I need help doing that. What is Phase 2 and what is Phase 3? Telling me that we're expanding capability or capacity, what does that mean? You know, right now, we can handle so many flushes a day, and we expect the number of flushes to exceed what we.
So let's, let's go back to 2009. That actually was a few years before I got here. Out of the 2009 discussions came the red line. Now, the red line means something to Alderman Wolf and Alderman, and the mayor, but the red line is what council ultimately decided to be the service territory. Back then, they talked about going west, I mean, they talked about going west out into Canville, and they talked about going south, up, buddy up against North Aurora. They talked about a, a very substantial increase to the service territory, but in the end, they decided on this red line. Which basically, this red line on the western edge is Tanglewood, doesn't really go past Tanglewood. To the south, we did, of course, incorporate portions of Mooseheart, but not all of Mooseheart. It only really goes to Mill Creek. The southern portion of Mooseheart goes to, still goes to Fox Metro. On the north, kind of northeast, northeast part of downtown, we go up to Fabian on the east side of the river, and I'll come back to that point in a second. And then, of course, we encompass really all the parts of the city that normally people would envision. So that service trail was established. Then we looked at, and the reason why I want to come back to that point on the east side of the river, then we looked at flows, and we said, how much flow is going to come from these areas? Because back in 2009, some of these areas, and they remain that way, in 2019, they were vacant. So we said, what's going to develop here and here and here, and what flow is that ultimately going to bring to our treatment plant? And we decided back then, council decided that we wanted to do a treatment plant expansion one day up to 4.9 million gallons per day. There's some magic to that 4.9 number, and I'll come back to that in a second. We're currently at like 4.3 MGD, and we're on the watch list right now, so it's, we're basically at, at capacity today. So, as I indicated in my email to council earlier today, we can tell the residents we aren't going to do a rate increase, or we're going to do a smaller rate increase, and we're not going to do Phase 2 and Phase 3. First of all, the EPA is going to come back to us and say, you are going to take care of us for us, that's, that's a mandate, but we don't. But we don't have to, to expand. That's not something the EPA has, has a requirement for. We do not have to expand. We have contractually obligated ourselves to provide sewer service, sewer capacity to the One Washington Place development. But South Shumway, or this property north on the east side of the river, which is kind of where we were, we were kind of taking capacity from, so it'd be like where the, where the river, the banquet facility is up there, going all the way up to Fabian. We, council again, a couple of years ago, said, those properties are less likely to develop. Downtown is more likely to develop. So we're gonna take some of the capacity within the red line away from those properties, which probably aren't gonna develop anyways. We're gonna redistribute that capacity downtown. But we don't even have any extra capacity if we don't expand. So we can tell the South Shumway folks, you can't build because we don't have any, have any capacity for you. The Larson Becker property, you can't build because we don't have the capacity for you. And that, that, and that's basically in the east side of Fabian, just north of Prairie Commons, those vacant parcels by Fermilab, they can't build because we don't have any capacity for you. So we, we, if we don't expand, we can't really kind of finish development in town, which I think development to town is partially what the budget is based on. Because you guys are planning on new developments coming in town. So development is, is one key of increasing the capacity of the plant. That's one thing. I talked about regulations. Back in 2009, and again in 2013, we jump ahead now to 2019, EPA has yet to finalize on a number for phosphorus. Right now, it's 1.0. But in reality, they may lower the number to 0.5, or they may lower the number to 0.1. And that's, that's percentage of discharge for phosphorus. So we're meeting the 1.0 number now with our first phase of improvements. And we're meeting that through chemical injection, chem P, chemical phosphorus removal. But that's not ultimately what the EPA will allow. They're basically allowing plants to do that now as an interim step until ultimately they decide on what the limits are gonna be for phosphorus. And once they do decide on that, they're basically gonna make everyone incorporate into, into bio P or biological phosphorus removal, which that's part of phase three in our, in our ultimate plan. We'll probably petition to try and get them to change their mind and let us just keep the chemical phosphorus removal, but that's not guaranteed at this point in time. So anyways, that's the regulatory side, primarily phosphorus. And then finally, there's the rehabilitation side. I explained in my, my email earlier today. The plant went through major improvements in 1990 and 2000. So there is a considerable amount of equipment in that plant still from 1990. Mechanical equipment wears out. I mean, it has a service life to it. And eventually, it's going to die. It's best for us to replace that equipment before it dies, as opposed to on an emergency basis. 2000, again, another, another, both of those were expansions and rehabilitation. So phase one addressed some of those issues, some of those older parts of the plant, but it didn't do the whole plant. We only built the new administration building, which included sludge handling. And we built the new digesters, the aerobic, anaerobic digesters. We did not address the clarifiers, we did not address the headworks, we did not adjust the aerators. I mean, there are major components of the plant, as I keep bumping it. There are major components of the plant that were not included with phase one that are now, you know, 20 years, 30 years old, that are nearing the end of their life, that need to be redone, which is what phases two and three are. So all that rolls back into a $60 million project, which is funded by EPA loans, which is where the, the revenues come in. And I'll, I'll, to your very first point you made, we don't do increases just for the sake of doing increases. If we did, you know, you'd all had an electric rate increase for the last five years. We haven't had an electric rate increase since 2015.
And, and that's kind of what drove my question to begin with. Because that's something that stood out to me in reading the budget, was Peggy was proud of that and stated, we haven't had an increase, but there was no mention about water and sewer. And that first triggered me to, wait a minute, what's going on?
Well, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna go the other side and tell you, you probably have water.
And actually, there is, and if you check out the budget on page I-12, under total capital spending budget, it goes through wastewater capital, electric capital, water capital, storm sewer and streets capital. And in each of those categories, like the wastewater capital, it talks about a 4% rate increase will go toward funding the 20 years of debt payments of 1.8 million per year for phase one. So it does kind of break out what the increases will go toward.
And it's probably gonna continue. I mean, I'm, I'm telling you right now, water and wastewater are probably gonna continue to have rate increases for the foreseeable future.
It, it will continue.
Yeah.
And I, I want to put some perspective on it. And I, I added a slide because I anticipated this question tonight, on how much revenue we receive from the 3% increase and the 4% increase. A 4% increase for the wastewater fund is 130,000. We're drawing down reserves 1.6 million next year. So we're only increasing revenue 130,000. And there are some other projects. Here it's saying 60. The total projected cost right now is 75 million, or 73.5 million. So it's even more than 60 million, and it's significant. So I just wanted to point that out. And then we also have the CIPP lining. What we were talking about, the sewer separation, which is a shared cost between sewer and storm for Area Three and for Main Street. But we're, we also then need to reline the sewer the following year. And that also has a cost to it. And there is a sheet in here on that. I think it's one, it's over $1 million.
Now, like I said, when I read those, to me, those were self-explanatory. That I had no question. I could go explain to somebody what all of those projects were. It was phase two and phase three. What does that mean? What are we doing? I like the analogy with the red line, because one of the maps I saw today was a red line and a black line of what it could get to. And telling somebody, we're gonna get from red, move our way out?
Just to the red. The red is the ultimate one?
Yeah. There are some things in there that now that I know the background with those and some of the details you just provided, I can go answer those questions. And that helps tremendously. And, and that's what I was looking for, was what are those details that, that I need to take back to?
And if our master plan's not on the website anymore, we need to, to fix that. The master plan?
All I could find was the appendix.
Okay, so the master plan has been on the website all these years. So with recent updates, it's possible. So we, we can get it back on there.
Mr. Mayor, you wanna say something?
Yeah, I, I just wanna do a little history story here. Probably 55 years ago, when I was still in high school and I started coming to city council meetings, I think everybody was on the city council then is dead. But I, I, but I will, I want to say that because, I say that because there's a message here that I want to share.
Not that you're gonna do that.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that.
Is that foreshadowing?
Yeah, but the city council had a company up in Geneva called Remke Sharp that was engineers for the area. And they came in and started, Art Swanson was the newly elected mayor, and they were doing a study about the utilities in Batavia. And I'm about the, sitting out there in the audience, and I was about the only one sitting there, which was down at the old city hall on South Island Avenue at the time. And Mr. Remke or Mr. Sharp, I forget which one, got up and said, you know, he says, we need to tell you, you guys the story, there's some history here that's gonna plug Batavia for probably the next 50 to 100 years. And that's the fact that about 50 years ago, now, this is in 1965 or wherever it was, 50 years ago, the city of Batavia made a couple of decisions, doing some stuff that probably wasn't the smartest things that they should have done. Number one, they went on the southwest side of Batavia, down around Morton and Blaine and that area. And somebody said, well, gee, we're annexing this big thing southwest of Batavia called Mooseheart, and that's gonna take up all the development, so we're not gonna have to worry about doing any development down there. So we can maybe economize here, and what we can do is we can put all of our water into one pipe. We can put the sanitary sewer, and we can put the storm sewer into one pipe. And we won't, we don't have to worry about connecting anything further to the west or the south, because Mooseheart's gonna be down there, and they're gonna take all that water and deal with it in their own way. So that's what we did. We went down in that area and we put it all into one pipe. Then we went over on the northeast side, in the Earth, here area. And on the northeast side, there was a pretty bad stormwater problem up there, because if you get to this, to this day, if you go to the intersection of Van Buren and Franklin, things rise up. There's a, there's a pretty good hill there that kind of separates the east side. There's a far east, or going farther east, there's a, and then it goes down there by where Louise White, New Louise White School is, there's that big retention pond. And there was a huge water problem that was out there all the time. So the city council didn't know what they wanted to do about that, so they came up with the idea that they would let, quote unquote, the citizens build their own stormwater disposal system. And so they started digging a trench from about Latham and Prairie Street, through the backyards of houses on Van Buren and Prairie and whatever have you. And they came down, and they had, they had burned down the old east side school, which is now where the old Louise White School was. And there was a big gully there between Washington and River on, on State Street. So they filled in the gully with the, the rocks from the burned out school. But they also put a pipe in the ground from Washington Avenue and State down to the river. And so they ran this open ditch thing that they started, went to that pipe, and then they drained all the water from the east side down into that hole and down into that pipe. And the citizens put this sewer in themselves. And they all participated, because all of them were having a water problem, they all wanted to get rid of it. So then, this thing started having a whole bunch of problems, the thing was backing up and everything else. And they made it out of limestone. So it, it had a limestone base, and it had limestone walls, and it had a limestone cap, and then they put dirt on the top of it. And I don't know if Gary's had it since he's been a public works director here, but in my early days as mayor, there were several times on the northeast side when the old cavern down there collapsed. It was never engineered, it would just, all of a sudden, there'd be, somebody'd have a big hole in their backyard. And so we had to go up there and retrofit some storm sewer into the ground, and I don't know, maybe a little sanitary on top of it. But Mr. Remke and Mr. Sharp said back in 65 to the city council, you know, your future city councils are gonna probably have to deal with this problem 50, 60 years from now, because we think that even now, Mooseheart's not coming as close to Batavia as these people thought it was. There's gonna be some more growth down there, i.e. Mill Creek and all that area. And we're, you're gonna have some pressures on this system. So if you've been here five, five, six years ago, there's some of us on the council here remember when the residents, and the Blaine Street and Morton and all that, were having the backups in there, and they're back, and they're going in the basement when the heavy rain. So that was all stuff, you know, it was all just, we tried to do it on the cheap, I would tell you, 100 years ago. And the, the water system and the sewer system went in over there about 1912, 1913, just as Mooseheart was coming, it was gonna be a big boom time and everything else. But we tried to economize, and we put in these systems on both sides of the river that have come back to haunt us. And we've ended up having to spend a lot of money to kind of catch up on it.
So, anybody else? Well, I have, I have a couple of things I'd like to say to it all, too, then, just for clarity's sake. I remember when I first come on the council, we were interviewing for the design of our wastewater treatment facility. We interviewed about half a dozen engineering firms, we settled on Trotta. We, we couldn't expand our, land wise, couldn't expand our facility. We kind of locked in a couple of areas, didn't, we looked at some areas, they didn't work out. So basically, we had to make the decision to do it biologically, to expand our capacity. And I, and that's what phase two is gonna do. It's gonna expand it from 3.2 to, I mean, 4.2 to 4.9. And that's phase two. Phase two is gonna work on a biological process, it's gonna do the work further on the aerobic digestors. We're gonna do backup generation and odor control, which is a big thing in our downtown. Phase three, 16 to 17 million dollars, it's gonna replace the headworks. The headworks is whenever it comes into the system, they meet the headworks, and that's what gets kind of picked out of there and put to a landfill. And basically, phase three is kind of like the bookends, right? Because on the back end of it will be the filters.
Again, we may swap some of those pieces. Headworks may have to get moved up into phase two.
Mm-hmm. But it's just, these, these are the things that we're gonna be doing to, for, for our wastewater treatment facility. And so, and I do remember that we had to do it biologically. We had no land to, to expand with larger tanks and digestors. So I just wanted to get that out. So, anyway, put that behind us. We'll get to the, I'm looking for my paper, excuse me. Anyone care to make a motion on Ordinance 19-78, Amending the Municipal Code Relating Water Usage Rates?
So moved.
Moved by Chanet, second by Malay, or moved by Knopf, excuse me. You look a lot alike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. We'll just move right into Ordinance 19-79, Amending the Municipal Code Relating to Sanitary Sewer Usage Rates.
So moved.
Moved by Knopf, second by Malay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Just real quick on, kind of along the lines of this discussion, I was waiting to see how it went. But Joe's point about questions, he wasn't here for a multi-year project, so we're gonna have this as this continues to go. Some of us aren't gonna be here in two years, three years, whatever. And it goes back to, I think, what we've been saying collectively, it's always keep the narrative going. Because when Joe was asking you some of these questions, I'm like, yeah, I know it because I was there. But it doesn't give him the answer in a, in a way that Gary can explain it, so that when people go, well, what does Gary do? He just showed us how he earns his money, by knowing the details about what he's doing and being able to put that out there. It's always a good opportunity to refresh when Joe asks a question like that, that I don't know where to find it. If he can't find it as being sitting here, and I know how much he prepares, then other people can't. And when other people can't, then they don't know where it is. And then, due to the rest of the state, who knows where that spending is? Because that's really gone. It's not really gone here.
Well, I, I just want to say, too, to Marty's point also, keep asking the questions, and the hard questions, because that's what we do.
Conversations like tonight help everyone.
Yeah, and, and it's not putting anybody on the spot, it's not questioning anything anybody presented. It's, I'm gonna help sell this, give me the tools I need. Tell me what I'm, what I'm doing here. If I can understand it, I can explain it to somebody else.
And there's one other thing about asking questions, I really appreciate Bob showing up, because Peggy and staff put in so much time into this. We know how much time that we put into it, but they put in so much more. And for us to just discuss it and nobody show up and nobody ask the questions, it's just kind of like, all right, does anybody really care? We appreciate you do show up and care and ask the questions. Somebody's reading it besides us.
Next up will be Item 12, Resolution 119, one, or 19, 118R, approving Task Order Number Three with Siemens for an amount not to exceed 39,889. Perform equipment inspection at the Main Street Substation, Northeast Substation and Southeast Substation. Alderman O'Brien.
So we're having, I guess, coronas at our substations. I think coronas, I guess, are lighting over the?
Oh, those coronas.
Those coronas.
I was gonna bring the lines.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking the same thing. But anyway, so they're, they're, it was in our budget in 2019 to do, to replace these. And staff decided not to do it at that time. So it seems to be possibly worsening. And so it's in the 2020 budget to do it, $600,000, to, to, to replace the breakers at the Northeast and Southeast Substation. But right now, till we get to that, we should probably do some more maintenance on this, and this is what this is all about, maintaining it. So, and that's what the $39,889 is to do, clean them, wash them, I guess, survey it also, to, to ensure that, you know, whatever is there, it's not going any further, any, any of the deleterious effects of, of the coronas. So does anyone have any questions or comments?
Just very briefly.
Yes, please.
In 2018, and, and it actually was discovered in our southeast, we had an operational breaker issue, where the breaker wasn't functioning properly. So we had Siemens out to diagnose, and then we knew we needed to repair that breaker. When they were out there, they discovered this issue with coronas, which basically, if you, if you, back then, if you went up to the breakers, you could hear fried eggs, which is tracking, like when electrical equipment tracks, it has that crackling noise, and they're not supposed to have that. So they discovered that issue in 2018, and then we had them examine and test really all the breakers, and it was a widespread issue. The reason why then, we then budgeted for replacement in 2019, but at the time, so 2018, we had them fully clean all the breakers, and they said that, you know, cleaning all the breakers may buy us, you know, five years, and may buy us 10 years, or may not buy us really much any time. So we budgeted in 2019 to replace the breakers. At that time, they were no longer tracking, making the noise or having the corona issues, and we all said we were going to come back to them a year later and see how they're doing, which is what we've done now, and they're, the issues are back again. So it's clear that they need to be replaced. Instead of kind of keeping our fingers crossed while we go the next several months to actually get them replaced, this work before you tonight is to have them again cleaned, so this will get them into a position so that in the year 2020, we can get them replaced, and we know that between now and then, you know, they should be fine. So, we also don't want to spend $40,000 every year to just keep cleaning these things, it just makes sense to replace them. For $600,000, getting them all replaced, and again, having them for the next several decades, it makes the most economic sense, so that's why we're recommending to go forward.
Yes.
Just, again, clerical maybe typo, in the actual resolution, Section 1, this is Task Order Number Three, it's referring to Task Order Number Two with the McKee Substation.
Yeah, it should be Task Order Number Three, okay, that's just a typo.
So Gary, I have a couple of questions. How does a corona originate? How's it start? Who causes it?
So, and these breakers are a major manufacturer, and, but we haven't had these issues at our other substations, so Siemens' best guess is that it's some sort of a manufacturing issue. At this time, it's way too late to go back after the original manufacturer, because these have been in place now for 12, 13 years, we're way past any warranty periods. I don't know, we actually went back to the manufacturer in 2018 and said, you know, tell us what you're not telling us, is there, is there a batch of these breakers that you guys have had problems with? And they insist that there weren't, they insist that they haven't had any reports of this, that we're unique. It's so strange that we've got a whole, a whole bunch of these that are having this issue, that they say they haven't had. So I would answer your question probably by saying it's probably something from manufacturing that is...
And so we have this charged cloud around these, this instrument, how dangerous is that?
Well, Rahad actually points out in his memo that it can create a conductive path...
To go to ground.
To go to ground, so then you, then you have a short circuit and you have a fault. Then that, that basically catastrophically could destroy the breaker, and then you, then you have outages, of course.
How about safety for personnel?
Well, just again, if you were in the station when one of those faulted, it could be an issue, definitely. So we, again, we corrected, we thought we fully corrected, no, we knew we weren't ever fully correcting the problem, let me rephrase that, we knew we weren't ever fully correcting the problem, but when we cleaned them the first time, we certainly thought we had gained several years out of them, and then a year later, now we're back to re-inspect, and we're realizing that's not going to be the case. So we were trying to be prudent and frugal, it's a lot better to spend $40,000 to clean them and get several years out of them than it would be to spend $600,000 to just replace them. So we spent the $40,000, clearly it's not going to work, so yes, it is going to cost us another $40,000, but it's better to have spent a little money to try and save the big money than to just jump right into the big money.
Right. So in the Northeast Distribution Substation, that's presently kind of under construction also, parts of that, right? And so did any of, was that, could that have been attributed to any of this?
So back in 2018, before our construction started, one of the theories was both the Northeast and Southeast subs are adjacent to agricultural property. So is it, is it possible that mineral-rich soils, you know, in the form of dust, could be getting into these things and causing, causing some of the issues? We never were able to prove or disprove that theory, it's definitely something that's a possibility. So to jump ahead, if we were just having these issues now, we could definitely say, oh, maybe dust from construction is partially to blame, but this was all happening before the construction, this is really, I'm confident that this has nothing to do with the construction out there.
So are we housing these now? I know we were doing the, the transform...
What do you mean, housing? Oh, no, no, they, just the, sort of rebuilding the substations, you can't barely do that, so we're going to, we're going to be putting them back out. But again, these exist in substations all across the nation and the world, they have, they exist, and they're not a problem, so why ours is a, why ours are a problem, kind of leads us back to original manufacturing, and I think if we get a new batch of them and a new, they should be just fine, there should be no reason why they can't.
We're going to a different manufacturer?
Well, the manufacturer of these is ABV, so I mean, they're, they're a major manufacturer. We can, you know, say, say that, you know, we're going to go out to bed, so that's what we're going to do, we're going to inspect them and go out to bed, and we can make, cross that bridge when we get there, if they happen to be a little bitter. But they're a major manufacturer, we have ABV switches in other, other subs, our own subs, that haven't had any issues.
Marty?
Being as there's a potential for, it's the manufacturer, any subrogation or warranty recovery options?
It's way too, I mean, again, these are 13, 14 years old now, these are halfway through their projected service life, way past any warranties.
Anyone else? Anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Malay, second by Salvati. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay. Just consent agenda. I was going to say, do we want to go back, and I just thought of this, do we want, what are these, do we want to put on consent agenda? I think we should talk about the rate increases, those should be on the regular agenda.
And this last one should just be on the consent, how's that?
And then the other ones on the consent agenda?
On the regular agenda.
Is that okay? We'll do, just the rate increases will go on the regular agenda, everything else, I think. Okay. To our favorite part of the evening, the 2020 budget discussion.
There, I was missing a little bit. So some slides I put together just at the last minute here tonight, so I apologize if I have to make a couple of changes on the fly here as we go. But at the meeting we had last week, you instructed that we were to lower the property tax revenue by $250,000, so that change has been made. I went through and looked at our other revenues to make sure the projections were still on target, and based on the increases that we saw in October and November receipts, the November receipts just came in late last week, and we increased the projections for this year and for next year. And then the telecom tax, on the other hand, was lower, and so we had to lower that by $75,000. And so the general fund revenue as originally presented was $28.5 million, and with those adjustments, it is now $28.3 million. And then the impact of the property tax, the $250,000, which just is capturing the EAV, it's the last line on this picture here, that will provide revenues of $1,250,000 over the five years, and it will have zero impact to the homeowner, based on no change, of course, in their individual EAV, but with that rate change, it would have no impact to them. And then this chart just gives you information for the future, so you can see what kind of changes, a change to the rate would be for the owner of a $300,000 home, and what the five-year impact would be for our budget, and what it would be on the individual homeowner. For instance, the discussion that we had last week where we were talking about the $110,000, that would provide an extra half million dollars in revenue over the five years, and would cost the homeowner $60 over five years, and you can see how the other I stopped at $700,000, I don't know why I didn't stop at 200, but provided it for you anyway. And then this is the original sales tax chart, I'll post this on the website, so you can go back and look at it later, this is how it was originally presented for, the only numbers that changed are 2019 and 2020, increasing slightly in those two years. And then for expenditures, the direction was to cut $50,000 in spending, when I sent out the memo last week, I did not include the detail, and this is the detail of how we came up with the $50,000, overtime in the police budget, legal in training and administration, legal in HR, and then various small amounts in the fire department, and then $5,000 in professional services in finance, and $4,800 in utility billing. Now I added the $1 million transfer because I didn't hear any dissent not to, but that's what I would look for direction tonight, if you want to leave that transfer in there or not. The general fund expenditures as originally presented, with the $50,000 in cuts and the transfer of reserves, that increases the spending technically for the 2009, or 2020 budget, because we need to have it authorized through the budget to transfer it to the capital fund. So the final general fund budget would be $29,962,717. The water utility, I just increased, or included the additional line there where it shows what the impact of the rate increase is, it's $116,000 in additional revenue, and the average water main costs about $1 million, depending on the size of the section to replace, so you can see that it would take several years just to pay for one replacement. And then, as I mentioned earlier, $131,000 is the additional revenue for the sewer utility, and then we did have that one amendment to the budget, which it should have been in the original budget, it was an oversight that added just under $20,000 for the change to the administrative assistant to become full-time. That had no impact on the final reserves for the sewer utility. This was the budget and surplus and reserves as originally presented, and then this is the total budget for all funds, with spending and revenues, and then these are the reserves with the modifications. And that, that day's operation should be 145, in my memo it was 143, but due to the changes, the reserve number is slightly lower in my memo, and that's why it was 143, but we modified, after I sent the memo out, I modified 2019 projections, which slightly increased the, any reserves in the number to 145. And those were the only changes that we've had. Any questions or comments?
Why are the reserves so big for the sewer?
Because we haven't started fully paying down the wastewater loan. They, they gave us an amortization schedule because they wanted us to start paying back, but that is only based on $23 million, so they're waiting for everything to be finaled out, and then they'll give us a new loan schedule. And then we also have several million dollars in capital spending that we know we're going to be doing, we were planning for the Main Street sewer lining and the sewer separation, so those are going to be drawn down, and in anticipation of Phase Two and Phase Three, because when you only increase revenues $131,000, it takes a while to get to the needed revenue.
Dan?
Apologize for not being here, last couple of meetings, I would have asked these questions had I been there, I am, I am half regretting my trip to Mexico, because I would have liked to have asked these questions beforehand. I covered the city of Batavia for the newspaper for, I don't know, a few years, I've been here 10 years, I can't, I can't recall a deficit, ever.
For the budget, we have never had a deficit budget for operations, this will be the first year that we intentionally have a budget where we're passing it with a deficit operational budget.
And I guess I would have to say, knowing, knowing you and having worked with you as long as I have, how do you feel about that?
I don't...
I feel like we pushed you up against a wall.
I don't feel comfortable with it, I, my recommendation was to cover that so that we were only using it for capital, but I understand the council's concern about the level of the reserves.
Can you, can you go back to the slide that had the extra pennies on it?
Sure.
That was actually kind of fascinating to me, because I, when I was reading through stuff, I'd been driving around with this thing in my car, it actually, it has sand in it, it made it to Mexico. I was expecting a couple of different funds, I know we had discussed as part of just our general discussions throughout the year, going back to strategic planning and whatnot, hey, maybe we should probably set up a fund for this, or we should talk about these things. It never got past a concept phase whatsoever, but I had originally thought, I'm actually glad you went up to 80 cents, because it's interesting to see where those numbers go. At 74 cents, 75 cents, we are half as much, we are less than half as much as a very large city to the south of us, so I'm not proposing that we double our taxes. But if we were to add a couple, two, three pennies to it, it is not a tremendous impact to the bottom line. And the reason I say that is because I fear that if we approve a budget that does not have an increase of some kind, some kind, that we're going to be talking about a larger increase next year, a substantially larger increase next year, and I feel like home rule sales tax is going to be on the table.
That will likely be one of the options that we would present.
I would rather have an uncomfortable discussion tonight than have an angry discussion next year, when we have a room full of people. Just a year ago, we battled a group of, battled, dealt with a group of residents who were concerned about our spending, it feels like we have all these tools, more than 70% of the city voted in favor of maintaining home rule authority, we have all these tools in front of us, I don't feel like we are using them, or at least thinking about what the long-term impacts of some of these things are. And again, I'm not proposing, I'm just trying to be academic about this, I'm a banker, this is, this is what I would do. Let's just say we did five more pennies, and I recognize that gives the mayor more gray hair, let's just say we did five more pennies, and took each of those pennies and put those into a fund, in perpetuity. Am I reading that right in saying, we'd have $2.5 million that we'd be saving up towards whatever project it was that we were trying to work on?
Yes.
We don't have any money in the budget for river stabilization.
No. The only strategic plan items that are in the budget are the road diet. I'm sorry.
125, 125?
The traffic study, yeah.
Okay. I feel great that we had all those meetings and talked about all those cool things we wanted to do, and we funded one of them, that's great, that's better than we have done before. But I feel like we're missing something here, and I recognize that tonight is probably not the night to have that discussion. I'm okay moving forward with what we have on the table here, because we have to approve a budget, but I would at least like to have a discussion about what my mom's taxes are going to look like next year, she has a $300,000 house, she's going to be paying this next year. I have a very modest house, it's literally a dollar a month to my, to my bottom line for my house, it's not, it's not a lot of money, and I feel like I get some great services from the city, I really do, but I also feel like we are kicking the can further, because we are not addressing things that we spent all this time talking about. Why would we not start paying for some of those things? Why would we not start setting money aside for those things? I'm not calling for a second bridge, I'm saying we should set some money in a fund for a regional something, I'm sure this... I'm sure the city is going to owe something, whether it's a partnership with North Aurora or partnership with the county, a partnership with the state. They're going to ask us for some money. We have literally nothing saved for it. And then I would also go back to the the reserves. I don't think of that as a savings account. I again, as a banker, I think of that as a checking account with just too much money in it. I recognize that it's probably too high, but I guess I would ask you, do you do you feel like if if nature threw something at you, if a crisis threw something at you? I feel like you could pay for it with our reserves, just about anything we could throw at you. A tornado, God forbid, a natural disaster, we could probably save ourselves. We could pull ourselves out of just about any catastrophe we could think of because we have planned for it.
And that that is the purpose of having some reserves, certainly at least our policy calls for 60, but I feel more comfortable with 90.
And at this rate, it's all gone in six years, all of it in six years. We are lying to ourselves if we don't if we don't look at those numbers.
Right.
I'm afraid of 80 cents. I'm afraid of it. But we could have done a penny five years ago and another penny four years ago and another penny three years ago. We should be on that trajectory if we're going to tackle any of the things that we were going to do. I leave politics out of this discussion in general. I have never once on my father's grave made a vote based on reelection. I say a lot of unpopular things, I feel like. I feel like I found my voice last couple of years. I would not want to be running for office at a time where I felt like I was going to have to double taxes. I I we need to we need to address this sooner than later. If I'm speaking out of line, I apologize. But at the same time, I feel like we've already said these things. Am I am I out of line?
Thank you for saying it again. I tried to say that the other night that, you know, we've all had all these great and grand ideas about all the things we want to do in town, the staff we wanted to add for the things we'd like to see happen in town, and we have to pay for it somehow. And the frustration is that, again, what we've talked about over the years with our water rates is it's much easier to take a little bit each year to get to the point where you want to be than it is to say, nah, we're we're going to be nice and we're not going to raise it at all this year. We're not going to do that. And then next year, we're going to have to raise it. And we're probably going to have to raise sales tax to get there as well because for the past several years, we have not wanted to do that. We wanted to stay low and and change without having to pay for it. You know, to create the change that we've all talked about at all the meetings that we've had and said, hey, we really want to do this. This is a great thing. Wow, let's charge forward and do this. Well, we have to pay for that. I mean, Gary reminds us every time we talked about adding something to the city, whether it be a new street, you know, a new design, whatever it is, we have to maintain it and we have to take care of it. And that's costs money. And the reality of it is if we don't pay for it now or we don't start trying to plan for that and putting money away for whatever we decide we want to do in the future, it's never going to happen. And if we do want to make it happen, it's going to be a lot of people's head on the chopping block if you come back and say you want to raise 10 cents. Or you want to raise 5 cents and you want to raise sales tax a percentage.
Mm hmm.
You know, we're really struggling to try to maintain or grow our sales tax base. And to go after that at this point in time really scares me.
I just don't want to be the first. I would like to follow St. Charles. I would like to follow Geneva and say, okay, we're going to raise ours a quarter point because they did. We shouldn't be the first ones out the gate doing that. And again, I apologize if anything, what I said was out of line. I I feel very passionately about this.
And I think that's reality, Dan. I don't think it's out of line. I think it's reality and it's a reality that we all have to face. You know, if we want to add things and we want to do things differently, somehow it has to get paid for. You can't say you want something new, but you can't add the revenue to pay for it. Marty?
Maybe we stop saying we need new. Maybe we stop saying all these grand ideas that we want. Maybe what we're saying is I fully weigh it. I know and I know it's hurting me. We can't talk about it in pennies because if you think about it in pennies, it means nothing. I look at that and go, that's to the the 78.3. That's $2.5 million that we have taken from property taxes, from property owners for owning a house in this city. You have paid 200 or 2.5 million dollars. There's a cost to that. And we talk about the slow increase of costs, but we never ever, I've said it since I've been here, we never have the equal discussion of how much are we going to cut in relation to that. We never ever have the discussions about spending cuts on equal par and equal consideration with raising revenue. It's just not there. The easier thing to do is to say, let's just take a penny here, let's take a penny there, gobble, 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 and say, well, we want to do these things. Well, maybe we should be saying we can't afford to do those things because this town still really is great. The mayor talks about how it used to be 1.1.51 20 years ago. Well, also 15, 15, 20 years ago or 15 years ago, it was 51 cents, 55 cents. Now we're at 73. That's where I keep saying that that gap from when it went down, it went down way past the 73 and it went up a quarter plus. So we're not talking that quarter plus, that people that moved here based their budgets on and tried to stay within those budgets, that has been compounded yearly. And so when you've gone from not 151 down to 73, it's gone from 51 when you started moving here up to 75 or 73. That's where it's starting to strangle. And then you go with what the state's doing. We see what the state's doing. Why would we want to follow them? They can't afford to do stuff, but they still they raise taxes and still do the stuff. We're saying it's hard right now. Maybe the granting projects that we want, no matter how much we want them or would like them, we don't do it right now.
If I may, by virtue of the the costs going up every year, it would be beyond foregoing additional projects that are part of the strategic plan. I believe you would have to cut staff positions every year in order to maintain a zero increase to expense year on year.
Mike?
Well, I, you know, and I understand what Marty's saying, but what we hear every year also is staff is already depleted since 2010. I mean, you know, not we're not really putting back. The police are asking for more people, fires asking for more people. All staff is looking to to continue their their services. They're saying they need more people and we're not giving them more people and we're just making them work at it. And so I, you know, nobody wants to raise taxes, but everybody, when when they flush the toilet, they want everything to go down. When they flip the switch, they want the lights to come on. This stuff costs money to do. And you can see it doesn't just you just don't build a generator or you don't build a substation and say, okay, we're done. I mean, after 20 years, that substation needs replacement parts. It needs a rebuild. It costs money. And and where do you get that money from? I mean, obviously, we're utilities, so we do have revenue generating abilities with that. But nonetheless, there's there's costs involved in that. And and as I said the last time, we're looking to find ways to generate revenue and not just through property taxes. The best way to do it is through sales tax. To get sales tax generated is you got to give something. And how do you give something? You got to do it. You got to do some taxes with property taxes to start increasing like we did on River Street, we did on on Wilson Street, we did on Houston Street. We improved our infrastructure. We've improved the look of the city so people are coming to our city. We've gotten we got a company to come in, a developer to come in and and invest $50 million in our town, which is going to generate more sales tax. But you got to put something into it. You got to get skin in the game. And and I don't want to tax people out of the city, but we have to do something to keep moving forward. And to Dan's point, it's, you know, we say we want to fund things and we have no money. And again, what I said last week, I'm opposed to taking everything out of our our reserves. Obviously, we want to pay for some capital improvements, but our reserves, if I mean, talk to the people in in that town in California. What are their reserves doing for them when their town burned down? I mean, national natural disasters are coming at us. Climate change is upon us. Talk to any scientist and we need to be prepared for that. I don't know what's coming at us, but something's going to come and we're going to need to have finances to to absorb whatever damage is done. And so I don't want to go crazy on reserves. We can use reserves because we have good reserves. The mayor has been very good through the years protecting it, but we have to use some of it, but I wouldn't go crazy on it. So I just think, you know, we have to be more creative and to be creative is we got to do more sales tax, get something to get our sales tax base up and running and stronger.
And I fully agree with you. And that's what I'm saying is if I can't afford my property taxes and I'm focused on that, I'm not spending all the stuff that I'm spending. So you're actually causing that which you're trying to avoid. If you want me to be, I said it last week, economics, economics is all about the confidence in your ability to spend. If I think I can't spend because and it's not just, it's not really our part of it. It is the school. We know that's the white elephant in the room.
Okay.
But we can't do anything about that. But what he said last week is we start setting the example. We know that what we need to do is, and we're not talking about deficit. I don't think anybody here today is thinking about continuous deficit spending forever. We're looking at what we were told last year, what we see this year, what we're seeing statewide and federally and just saying, we can do the utilities because those are the things that we're investing in. But for the other things, for the city running the part of it, we're making those hard decisions that I'm making on my household budget stuff right now. And if I then cannot spend discretionary funding, then those sales taxes are going to bottom out. And that's what I'm trying to avoid with my thinking is we avoid the eroding tax base from a fear of from a lack of confidence. We are doing things right in this community because people are moving here, because industry is moving here, because retail is moving here, because commercial is moving here. Where else is that happening in the state? This state, it's not happening. So what are we doing? We have to give some, we're doing it right. And if it means weaving the the lanes and figuring out that right spot, there is no right spot. We could be guessing what we need today. We could have a big development come in next year and all of a sudden, oh, we didn't even see that coming. They might start collecting on Amazon. They might start doing a lot of other things. But we can control what we control today and this is where I sit today on it. I'm comfortable with this position based on what my feel in the lay of the land is.
Mark?
Yeah, I mean, to continue what Marty's saying, I mean, I mentioned this last week. I haven't really been getting raises at work, but my cost of living is increasing. So when I look at projects I want to do around my house, I'm like, oh, I'd really like my deck to be a three season room. Well, I haven't done that yet. Really like to replace all the tile in my house. I haven't done that yet. I've got strategic plan for my house, but it's just not right for me to just say, I mean, I could do it. I could say, you know what, I'm going to go get a part time job at night and never be home. I mean, I'm already here six nights a week, six nights a month. Everybody knows that. So I could just do that and I can increase my revenues. But then there's a sacrifice. That sacrifice would be my family. Oh, but I get all the really nice things I want. Well, that's just not going to happen and we're just not at that spot right now. There's, you know, we have hope that there's going to be an increase in revenue just out of the natural buildup of the town and the town's going to have more people. So we're going to get a little bit more money from the state when there's a census. And all those things are happening. I want to stay put right now. Yeah, maybe it's political suicide for me in in next year that we come to a point and it's like, oh, my gosh, things really went really south on us and and I lose my seat. I don't want to lose my seat. I think I've made some good decisions over here over the last few years and I want to continue doing that. And but for now, I'm not, like you said, I'm not worried about that. I'm not going to make a decision based on, you know, trying to keep my seat and that's not what I'm trying to do. This is not a lifelong thing for me. I look at this that in eight years, my daughter should be graduating college. If she doesn't move back here, I'm likely to find a job out of the state. I cannot afford this. It's eating into my retirement. And I'm not the only one. I'm sure a lot of us could say that, that it's like, wow, I could go live in another state that I'm not paying $9,000 a year towards my real estate taxes and take half or more of that and be investing that into my retirement. That's lost income for me and I can't continue to do that to my neighbors.
Go ahead. One, I wasn't asking for a blank check just to work there. I wanted to at least have the academic discussion. I I realize that I have those projects too. I hate my bathroom. After going to Vallarta four times in three years, I love the bathrooms that I've been in. I hate mine so much, but I don't have the money for it, so I'm not going to do it. That said, I'm not sure if any people here buy CDs. Again, as a banker, we got rid of our five year CD. Most of my competitors got rid of their five year CD. There's a reason they did that because they think that there's a recession coming. We're about to go through, whether we like it or not, probably an impeachment of some kind, whether it actually happens and he gets removed from office. He'll continue tweeting and every time he tweets, the markets don't know what to do. So we are in a very uncertain political time right now. I don't think that that's going to get better. There's a possibility that developers will choose not to build something. There's a possibility that projects that we think are going to happen are not going to happen now. And so my fear is that if we are relying on growth, that could be problematic. But that said, the fact that we are making an investment in economic development, we are throwing money for hunting and gathering of a car dealership, hopefully two or three car dealerships all next to each other would be fantastic, and then a hotel. Having those things in place, if we could place a high priority on those things, I think that we might be able to weather something like this. But if that falls apart, I don't know where you would cut. I think I saw you say on, again, I watched it. I watched everything. International calls are expensive, so I didn't call in. You did say we were going to cut, we're cutting to the muscle now. We're cutting it into bone. We do, we do run a pretty lean operation here. We do.
I think Mr. McQuillan's point was very accurate when he said cutting $50,000 out of the budget. I mean, we can say that, you know, cutting the professional services, but at the same time, if we need those professional services, if we need those legal services, I'll be coming back with a budget amendment to say that's just something that we need to do. When you talk about cutting the budget by $250,000, that's people.
It is. And again, I'm not saying I have, I'm not saying I have the answers. We spent all this time talking about these projects. The dam is coming. The depot pond is coming.
And people is service.
Understood. The depot pond is coming. And I recall a couple of years ago, didn't we say we were going to help pay for half of that? We said we were going to have a partnership with the?
Park District.
Park District. I thought we said we we had a joint meeting with them and said we were going to help fund that.
That was the discussion.
I remember being outside at a nice little joint meeting and having a little charrette that we did. We're going to have to pay for some of that, whether it's our land or not.
They might not be paying for their half, though.
Then we need to make, we need to make some very difficult decisions. The depot pond will will be a mud flat. And if we're cool with that, I'm cool with it. I don't, I don't ice skate, so I'd be cool with a mud flat, but.
But if the ones that own it are good with it.
I get it. There's more partnerships, there's more discussions that have to happen. I just feel bad that we spent all those extra nights talking about strategic planning. Some of those things are not tile. Some of the things are not my bathroom. There are some basic necessities that need to be done in the house and I'm going to pay for those things and I will get a second job if I have to, to pay for some for some of those things. My bathroom works, it looks, I, whatever. But there's things on our strategic plan that we got to do. We got to, we got to pay for them. That's all. And again, I wasn't looking for a blank check, but we have to have a serious discussion.
Elliot's next.
I was yielding, she was pointing, whatever. I don't dispute that there are some things that we have to do. There's also a lot of things that we have said that we want to do. And I absolutely agree that I think right now, given the the state of the state, given what's going on, we we need to pull back on some of those wants. I'm not disputing the fact that, yes, if we invest in our the fact that, yes, if we invest in our community, we'd like to believe that that will yield results to the positive of our community. I, I'm at a point now where I'm not sure that that's as, as sure a thing. And, and certainly with, with knowing that the 2020 census is around the corner, and that's gonna impact things that are outside of our control, I don't feel the need to give to the argument that, that is always brought to me anytime we come around to the budget, which is, what are you gonna do about my property taxes? What are you gonna do about them?
I'm gonna give you the names of all your school board members, is what I'm gonna give you.
Totally get that. Totally get that. And, and as even yet another discussion showed today, they aren't separating it. People are not separating it. They don't care. They don't care. And I'm, I'm not saying that that's okay, but that's the reality of that's coming at us. It doesn't matter. You're raising my property taxes. Period.
So the leaf pickup on Saturday, that was overtime. Should we not have done that? Those are the decisions we are going to make in the future with this type of spending plan.
Right. And, and that was something I was gonna bring up, is, you know, we talk about the fact we want to keep our rates low, we don't want to add to that. Then we have to make some decisions as a council that we're not gonna provide some services, or we're not, things are not gonna be there. And, and when that happens, and when 14 of us can vote on that and make that happen, then there's a way to change the budget. But when we say yes to that, before we get to the budget, it's then incumbent on us to pay for it. So we can't say yes that we want that, or we can't say yes that we're gonna add another police officer, or we can't say yes that we're gonna add another fireman, and then not pay for it. And, and that's the, and that's the kind of discussion I tried to make a point of last week.
I've been here for 10 years.
Abby's next. She's been waiting.
No, she hasn't.
I've been having some heartburn since our last, the way we left the last one. And I think Alderman Chan's, it brings up a lot of really good points. And there are so many things in the strategic plan that I get so excited about. And I, I fear that, that, and there's, there's a John Muir quote or something, that, you know, you pull on something in nature and you find that it's tied to everything else. And I worry about the $1,200 cut here and the $5,000 cut here in your, in your individual budgets. That don't seem like a lot. I fear the ramifications down the line that that has, that we start to unravel other capacity to be productive with what we do give staff to be productive with. And they are so productive with what we give them. And I, I don't want to unravel, unravel that. And, and I also don't want it to, to strap us with not giving our economic development person all the tools that they need to, to be productive, because that is, you know, something that's gonna hopefully pay for itself and generate a lot more in, in above and beyond. And I think a lot of our strategic planning projects are also those leverage points that are going to, you know, you tweak that, that little lever in the system, but it has, it has an exponential effect in other places that can help us become more diverse, become more resilient internally. Because I do fear, you know, that we are relying on growth. We're always relying on growth to cover past costs, and that's, that's going to run out eventually. We can't rely on new growth, because there's limits to growth. And we're gonna hit the, I love, I want to see this redlined document. I want to see the red line so bad. Because there's, there's, there's ways to develop that are productive and yield more results than just, than just growth. So I would, I would be willing to see some, some pennies added if it's matched with a commitment that we really evaluate the way that we, that we grow, that whether or not it's adding new housing, new subdivisions, when we add new streets, when we add new parking lots, when we add new commercial areas, that we are doing it productively. There's, there's just so much out there to read and so many examples of cities going bankrupt because they're overbuilt. And there's so many examples of places that are turning it around and making really efficient use of their city budgets, because they have put constraints on the way that they build, and they put constraints on the way that they let housing develop. And, and, and I want to have some more conversations about that in the future. And, and I'll only agree to that, to, to a few more pennies, if we can say, we're gonna, we're gonna start limit, limiting the way, not limiting the way we grow, changing the way we develop, and not just relying on growth. But that's gonna be a lot of really cool conversations to be had.
Go ahead, Mike. Even though the percentage is going down to 73.3 cents, we're raising taxes. And I think we've raised taxes every year since I've been here. Last year, when we added the new police officer and community development, it came up to a $300,000 tax increase. So we haven't not increased taxes. The percentage is going down because the EAV is going up. If you look at all the other communities that we compare to, everybody but Montgomery, and I think Algen, percentages went down. So we're not the only ones that are thinking this way. I think a lot of other communities are in the same boat. I don't know, I, I just think we, we have costs, just today's costs, and we're not meeting them. We're, we're in a deficit. So we talked about the, the $12 for a $300, $300,000 home. It's $12 a year. I mean, that's a six-pack of imported beer. That's a glass of wine at a restaurant. And I'm not discounting people's states, but it's, it's not a lot of money. And, and we said, no, we're not doing that. Okay, well, now we have a deficit. And, and that's not, you know, that would have wiped out the deficit perhaps for this year. I've been close to it. So, I don't know. I, I've been here 10 years, and, and it's the same argument every year, you know, we're not gonna do it this year, not doing it this year, we're not doing it this year. And, you know, the battles we had, you know, Alan, to get things done were battles. I mean, I think we're, I don't know, just the same argument. So if I read this right, a one penny increase brings in roughly $100,000 in revenue the first year. So then we cut out the traffic study for the road diet and save $125,000. And there with two things, we just got an extra $225,000. Somebody doesn't, somebody still has to give up their beer, but they're not paying for a traffic study that they'll never benefit from. So Marty brought up a point, if you're gonna have an increase in taxes, have a dollar-for-dollar cut somewhere. And that's the first thing that I see that doesn't affect a person. The last thing you're gonna hear from me is take a warm body out of a fire truck. Because if, if the choice to me was a, a traffic study for a road diet, or a warm body in a fire truck, I'm going with the fire truck every time. Absolutely. But there are other things, and it's those, I, I don't want to belittle it by calling it a wish list item, but we have to look at needs versus wants. And if you're gonna cut a budget, just like I do at home, just like Dan's talking about, I would love to have a bunch more renovations to my house. Those are wants. Those aren't needs. I've preached it to my kids their entire life, and, and my youngest, who's in college now, gets it. He comes to me telling me, hey, I'm glad you taught me when I was seven, the difference between what I need and what I want, because I can budget better. And I, it's frustrating, but at the same time, it's like Mike said, we're not the only ones doing this. Other people are going into this budget period with optimism. And I think that was expressed last week, was optimistic credibility. Optimistic credibility were the two words that stuck with me from last week, and that's, I'm, I'm, I'm still satisfied with that.
Anybody else? Laura?
So with regard to the road diet, the road diet was a measure, and Alderman Salvati pointed out last week, it's a life safety issue. So we have a very dangerous crossing at McKee and Batavia Avenue, and that was identified as a way of addressing it. So it isn't, you know, just a want to some people. And, and to Abby's point about doing things that will promote growth, it was also seen as a way for people to safely come to the downtown from our west side, so that it is something that could be an investment in economic growth as well.
I would argue against, I would argue back that the intersection at Houston and 31 is more visible than McKee and 31. And if you're coming to downtown from McKee, you already need to go one block south. So does it matter which side of 31 you're on when you go one block south?
So Houston Street doesn't have a crosswalk at all. McKee is the intersection that has the crosswalk.
I'm, got the wrong one.
So you could go two blocks further south, which is Wilson Street.
There was a, a large discussion about, before the pedestrian crossings were put in, the one at Houston would have required an island, and the decision was made by the council at that time not to put the island in there.
I appreciate the discussion moving towards that, but I'll just say, and the safest crossing should be the signalized and, and crosswalked intersection, but that's where the most pedestrian versus car accidents have happened, at the stoplight with the crosswalk. So take that for what it's worth, and we need to move forward with the budget.
But to Joe's point about cutting something like that, on your first, like, meeting here, we unanimously voted that we were in favor of a road diet. All 14 of us voted in favor of the thing, thinking that the state was gonna tell us no. And not even four weeks ago, they're like, maybe. So the poll funding for that would be absolutely schizophrenic of us. We couldn't have, I mean, I'm just saying. That's why this is so frustrating. You take your pick. You can find things to cut, for sure.
I can find all kinds of things that I've.
You know, we, we could wait on those copying machines, $100,000 in copying machines.
Oh, my gosh.
Who touches paper anymore anyways?
Can we get those on a plan like the fire department, police department have about a couple a year, every few years, so that it's a little dense in the budget instead of one big chunk. But we're to the point, they all need to be replaced.
Right, because we haven't replaced them.
Because we haven't done that, so now we're stuck, so.
Abby?
So I could get out the actual numbers again, but just to the road diet discussion again. But it's, when you look at the same side of Batavia, or different sides of Batavia Avenue, and you look at the car-centric sides, and what they pay per square foot in property val, in property tax, compared to the pedestrian-oriented side of Batavia Avenue, and what they pay per square foot in property taxes, it's not even close. So it's one of those things that if we're moving towards a more pedestrian-friendly stretch of road, and we get more pedestrian-friendly stretches of development as a result, then they're going to be paying more per square foot towards our property taxes to take some of the burden off of all of our property tax bill. So it's, that's one of those thinking creatively towards the future, so that we're, that we're generating more per square foot of our precious resource of our land here into the future.
Marty?
Just because we agreed to have the conversation about something, doesn't mean that when it's time to actually decide it, you can make a decision. Because we need to stop the thinking, well, we, we set these things in motion. I can say I'm going from the top of the hill to the other side of the river. As I'm starting to go there, I see that the bridge is out. I don't put on the brakes and say, oh, I'm not gonna do it. Oh, I already decided I'm going across. There's different, facts and circumstances change, and that has been what has gotten governments in, in trouble, is they don't have the ability to go, oh, I made a wrong decision, or I have new facts and I'm going to amend it. It is not flip-flopping, it is critical thinking and making those decisions that we do in our normal, everyday lives. Everything that we're doing, when people say government should be like a business, this is the only part of it that it should, which is, we have new information, let's reevaluate it. Do we still want to do that? Can we still do it? Do we want to still do it? Yes or no? And it's not, we're, like you had said, you know, that's the only difference is politics, you get scared whether or not you're gonna keep your seat. In the real world, though, you lose the money, you're out too. So it's the same thing.
Elliot?
Sorry, just one more, just to bring it back up. The whole notion of, of being up for election next year, I, I wasn't taking it personally, but I was just gonna say, thank you, Joe, for reminding me of what I said last week. If next year we have to go in to the budget discussions and face the reality of a tax hike, and, and possibly a larger one than was initially proposed here, I will be perfectly fine having a discussion about the responsible tax hike next year, knowing that I held the line this year, because again, I'll feel comfortable that it's necessary, and that's why I'm supporting it. If I felt it was necessary year after year, maybe that's something else that I should be looking at going on underneath the hood of this. I don't think it's necessary year after year for everybody's property taxes to keep going one direction.
And I've always said I'm not free running, so.
I guess I look at it and think, okay, I'm gonna be on the city council for a few more years, and when I walk away from it, they're gonna have a huge deficit budget to deal with. And that's what I don't want to leave. I don't want to leave a legacy that looks like that. I don't want to saddle other people sitting on either side of this table with having to be put into that situation, because we didn't want to raise taxes a penny or two a year. That's my fear, is that we're gonna leave that for somebody else to have to clean that mess up. And that's something we're gonna have, you have to be able to be comfortable with that. Tony?
Yeah, thanks. I agree with you, Alan and Dan. I wish you were here for the discussion about that. Hope Mexico was good. I'm, I'm still where we're at, you know, we looked at three options, and the one was, you know, exceeding this, you know, going out with black boxes and asking for even more money. We felt that wasn't, I feel, okay, it's not the time for that. But $12 is less than CPI. It is less than the cost of living increase. I'm worried about, you know, it, it adds up. It's geometrical. It's, you know, it's, it will compound, that's the term I was looking for. If we can keep this, you know, the, a small amount. I had a discussion with a, a business owner that employs a lot of younger workers, and, you know, he's like, I, I don't know how I'm gonna pay for this, the $15 an hour minimum wage. And I said, I know, isn't that ridiculous? Imagine if we didn't ignore that for a couple of decades, or at least a decade in Illinois, but in this country, it wouldn't be a big shock to everyone. But now it's a big problem, and now it can create bigger problems. That's what I'm worried about if we don't continue this, steady the course, and it's at a rate that's less than the cost of living increase. So I'm, I, I think that, I saw it as, that, I forget what option we called it last time, but the, the $12 or the.
A or B.
Yeah, whichever option that was. I saw that as the middle way. And, and I think going the middle way, I think this country would serve well if we could find our middle way again.
Would it be, would it be useful to see if this discussion has moved the needle at all in this draw poll? I'm not making a motion, I'm just very curious if, if the eight to four is change, or eight to five is changed.
We put the direction to staff last week, come up what they did. We got to see what the cuts were. Does anybody have any comments on the cuts? I mean, personally, I look at it, and I think, okay, this is great. We, you know, bought everybody a new desk, but you gotta sit in the old chair that you had. And that's the kind of way I feel about it, when we went to the staff already and said, you know, we're really not excited about raising taxes at all, so work with what's there. And, I mean, I felt like they came as close as they were gonna get without, you know, a $200,000 or $250,000 cut. And that's not simple. I mean, the reality is, when you got, what, 70-some percent of our, our budget is personnel, you're gonna cut money out of it, you're gonna have to get in the staff. And that's not gonna be easy.
I would like to address a couple of things. Alderman Rosado said, we are raising taxes. We're raising the levy, but we're not raising taxes, because that, the same rate approximately will be on the tax bill to each individual taxpayer. And so we're capturing the growth in EAV with that amount of money. Anything above that would be an increase to an individual property taxpayer. But the increase in the levy is capturing the new growth. And then as far as the cuts, as staff, over the years, we've, we've learned that we don't put new things in, because it's going to be cut out. So it's almost always bare minimum, unless a department says, I absolutely have to have new staff. The building department was falling. The building department was falling behind in inspections, they had to have it, and the police department felt very strongly about adding another police officer, but generally those kinds of things haven't been brought to the city council. The increases in property taxes that we've had in the past were for capital, they were not for operations aside from the building inspector and the police officer. We increased property taxes to pay for the storm sewer work in Ward One and in Area Three. Oh, it sounded like it was pouring rain, sorry, distracted me. But as Alderman Wolf said, our, our salaries account for seventy-eight percent of our budget. So the other large items, SALT is a very large portion of the general fund budget and TRICOM for our dispatch services and TRICITY ambulance are, are large contracts that account for a large portion. And then the other supply items are a very small portion of the budget. We can go through probably and, and cut out five hundred dollars here and five hundred thousand dollars there. We could cut out the copiers, those are considered capital as far as the budget. So whether we replace one this year, one next year and one the next year, it's not going to have an impact on sustainability. And I think that's what the conversation should be about, is making sure we're passing a sustainable budget and that we're accomplishing everything that you choose, whether you choose to do the items in the strategic plan or not, that's a council decision, but we want to make sure that we have everything in the budget that you want to see happening. So as far as the cuts to spending, it would have to go to people most likely if you have, are having any kind of substantial cuts. And we'll be fine this year as discussed because we have good reserves, but next year there may not be some of the one-time revenues and there will be a larger gap to fill.
Peggy, I agree. Last week, I mean, I opposed the fifty thousand dollar pay cut of, of tax cut. I think it was a number just pulled out of the air. Well, let's just pick a number. So we did, and I think the, what you put up here is basically we're, we're taking your pens and we're making you count your paper clips. I mean, like, like Mr. McQuillan said, you know, it's not anything. I mean, we're just, to me, it's just being a pest. That fifty thousand dollars was just busy work for staff to find something so we can say we did something. I mean, I, I work in construction and when guys give me a hard time on a rainy day and they want to go home and get their two hour show up, and they're giving me a hard time, I say, no, you can't go, I got you for two hours, build me a concrete form here, and they do it. You know what, now move it over here, because that's, I'm being a pest to them. And that's how I feel that vote was. It's, I mean, it was really, you know.
Well, the budget is just a plan. For instance, we talked last week about the downtown snow removal and the contract was approved at not to exceed seventy thousand dollars. We may not hit that seventy thousand, although fearful we will this year.
Trending up.
It may hit, no, it won't go over seventy, we know that. But those are the kinds of things that happen from year to year. We try to pick a middle ground for a dollar amount to budget so that it's, it's, you know, we look at trends and we look at weather, you know, I'm looking up the farmer's almanac to see what we're expecting for weather because that definitely impacts, like I had mentioned, electrical consumption, when it's a cool summer, revenues are way down. So those are all of the things we, that we look at. But I wouldn't be working here if I had a crystal ball that would tell us exactly what we're going to need because things change. So we, we do the best we can and, and get it as close as we can. If you cut a line item and it, we needed, it will have to come back and say, we're really needing this amount of money, or revenues are lower than we thought or they're coming in better. One of the things I did want to mention is the sales tax on Amazon because we had talked about that last week. And I was not aware that they're shifting how they're going to distribute it when they pass their new budget in July. Starting July one, they're going to be, the retailers that qualify, that have to collect the home rule sales tax, they'll be paying it through sales tax, not through the use tax. So that will hit us in July, August, in September, we'll start seeing that shift. So we may move the budget between line items, but it's not.
Will that, will that come back to us in the LGDF?
No, actually that, it's going to come back from, still from the state of Illinois, but through sales tax.
Yeah, from the state.
Yes.
See, I just, I guess my fear about that type of revenue is always, where's it going to come back? How's it going to get back to us? Through what, you know, authority and how are we going to be able to track it?
Well, it'll be interesting because, because we're a home rule community, we have a reciprocal sales tax agreement with the state where we get quarterly reporting on all of the sales tax payers and the amount that they pay each month. We can't disclose that because of the agreement, it's proprietary, but that way we can make sure that businesses that are located here are paying the appropriate sales tax or at least paying something, we don't know if it's the appropriate amount. But now the online retailers, they are saying, we'll hire a company to determine if an address is in the city or not. So that's going to be a, a business for.
Who administers that?
Another, right. But we should be able to get some kind of report then through our reciprocal sales tax agreement on that online, because right now we get nothing. It's just a lump sum.
Marty?
Something that bothers me a little bit is when we're having these discussions, that if we're thinking about keeping taxes low, that is some sort of value judgment against not being sustainable. And how we get back to being, meeting in the middle ground is understanding the other view. I'm also thinking of what I'm doing as being sustainable in that I want to be able to stay here. I want to be, Mark wants to be able to stay here. We want to be able to stay here and if we, like the rest of the state, start eroding away, now you're, now you're losing all that money that you were gaining on. And just like the state, you will never be able to get that back. So that's the problem. And when we're talking about figuring out, you know, the cuts and so on, so forth, absolutely, that completely one hundred percent weighs on my mind because I'm trying to figure out, what do we want for the community? What do we want to do? What do we want to do as a city? While at the same time, turning around to my children and making those cuts on them. And knowing what I make in a salary, and then I look to my neighbors that I know don't make as much or make different or don't, or have different situations, and I go, my God, how do they afford it to begin with? And those things weigh on my mind from just looking at it from sustainability, it is a different type of sustainability. And right now, I am concerned, but I wanted to get back to the way I felt last week about, it's not being optimistic about growth, it's being optimistic about the energies that are coming into this community, that people will be spending their money. We're not seeing that. But what I see as on the edges is people stopping to spend money, doing that exact thing that we are in complete agreement on. And yes, we have this discussion every year, but yet the city perseveres. We still do and are, it always seems to work because our reserves continue to go up every year. And it goes because they are able to do the things. And yes, we had the staff that went down, but we have added staff. We have done things on the storm bank. We have figured out how to separate the hundred year problem that they did with all of those things. And look at what we've done in the past, at least since I've been on, and compare that with a lot of the problems that Abby alludes to, the fifty years of shoddy planning that was really done. We have to accept the responsibility that we cannot correct all of the mistakes that were before us. We, we just can't. We can't put it on ourselves, we can't put it on our kids, we're not kicking a can down the road because we have been addressing those things. It's not that we've been coming in here going, nope, every year and not doing anything. I'm very proud of the things that we have done and I'm very proud because we have been strategic in those planning things and why we're doing them. And why I'm sitting here this year especially is, I look and look at what the uncertainties are and go, well, I don't want to kill it out completely because I know for me personally, and I know that that would kill it. I know I'm going to stop spending, I know I'm going to stop taking the kids here and I'm going to stop doing this and I'm going to stop doing that. And who relies on my money? And what I spend is more than twelve dollars. But I know that the confidence of that will start to change it because it's twelve dollars for us, it's potentially one hundred and seventy-eight dollars for the parks. It's, I don't even know what the school's going to be yet, but you add those things, they don't operate in a vacuum and it goes to the discussion of, we, whether we like it or not, are the face of the city. And that's, that's a, we're never going to be able to get around that.
I would, I would just comment that you talk about every year, that what concerns me is Peggy just said that, is we are deficit spending in this budget for operations, that's the first time we're doing that. That is a big, huge red flag in my book.
Absolutely. And, but to go with that, what weighed in my decision is our limits for what we said were the cap are ninety or sixty? Ninety days.
Ninety, our policy is sixty as a floor.
Right, even regardless, but it's a hundred and sixty-nine and we've never really committed, or a hundred and fifty-nine. No, no, without the.
Currently.
At current, it's one fifty-nine. But that goes back to, we've never actually until within the last two, three years, even had reserves as part of the discussion on some of the stuff to use it. It was always, no, we need to save it, but then the more you collect, the more you don't want to use it. And it created this, no, it's mine, it's mine, we can't spend it. That's where, being new, we never used reserves before. So now we're using it to kind of get some of that equity down, kind of to Bob's point of, we overcollected.
But the problem with using reserves is, you know, when you're using it for capital, those are one-time expenditures, when you're using it for reserves, those are reoccurring every year and so you're going to see that compounding effect. And that's, that's, that is a big red flag in my eyes. And I think as much as we can mitigate that, serve us well.
Drew?
So a lot of talk on the increased spending has been around special projects, but as I recall, there've been two, at least two, maybe three contract negotiations we just went through this year and approved contracts. And we are contractually obligated for the next several years to increases and we all voted for those, knowing that we were going to have to pay for those. And I, you know, I don't know a number off the top of my head, but I, that's, with seventy percent of our budget being personnel costs and contractually obligated for the next three years to set increases that we all voted for, we have to find a way to pay for it. And if we're not willing to do that, then we need to be giving very different instruction next time contract negotiations come around and deal with the consequences of how that impacts police, fire, electric utility, all our city services. So.
Thank you for reminding me.
That, that, that average coming off the top of my head is, was about two point seven five, seems to be the number that sticks in my head, twelve dollars is a, is a lower percentage.
The two point seven five is the highest one, one of, it's the highest contract.
Two and a half, is it?
Two and a half.
Two and a half, okay, so that, but that twelve dollars is a lesser, a lesser percentage.
Right, as a city, we're, we're fortunate that we do have other revenue sources. I mean, we say, you know, it's the school district, it's the school district, they are raising property taxes, but that's, that's their funding source. They don't have sales tax and, you know, other types and ways to tax. So that is their way of paying for things, whether or not their total spending makes sense or not, you know, that's for citizens to attend those meetings and, and look at their spending. But for ours, we, we have not increased, and I'm, I keep going back to it, but we have not increased the levy for operations aside from last year when we added the, or was it in twenty eighteen now? Yeah, was it, it was the twenty eighteen budget that we talked about adding the police officer and the building inspector, but then Sam's Club closed, so we waited and then inspector was hired at the very end of twenty eighteen and then the police officer was twenty nineteen.
I think we have, you, you need to come up and use the mic, Bob, so.
I didn't know if you were opening up a public comment.
Yep. I was just about to say if everybody else has done, I know Bob wants, he's been waving his hand back there for a while.
Okay, I am still Bob McQuillan even after two and a half hours. I think we need some levity because you've got a great discussion going on here. I would assume that it costs an average of about three thousand dollars a year for someone's child to play travel baseball. Okay, I'm assuming that. I'm assuming that people don't like their taxes to go up, but if their school taxes go up two hundred bucks, that's okay because it's for my child and everybody else is going to pay for that. So it seems as though if your taxes go up on the city by twelve bucks, oh my God, I'm pulling my hair out. Why is this happening? And it's ironic that those things go that way and it's, it's almost like, I care about my kids and my kids are entitled a lot more than my house or the services I get from the city. So that's my levity for tonight, but none of you guys are laughing, so I don't know if you got it or not. But I, I guess what I wanted to do is just get a little personal here. And I think my story is, is a lot like a lot of other people. Batavia is kind of a graying community. Like I said, we lived in Geneva for almost twenty years and we moved out of Geneva for property taxes were too high. So we wanted to stay in the area, we moved one mile, we actually just crossed over Fabian Parkway on Randall Road there and our taxes decreased a lot, okay? And we also moved into a townhome, so we downsized a little bit, but we also picked up the services of, you know, landscaping and, you know, snow and removal and all those things, and yet our taxes still went down. So that was a financial decision for us and probably one of the best financial decisions we've made ever. But when you look back, one of the also reasons why we moved out of Geneva was that three years ago, I had a fantastic job that paid six figures in full benefits. Well, that's not there anymore, okay? So then what do you do? And at sixty-two years old, that phone's not ringing off the hook for people wanting to pay you, you know, that good salary and benefits again. So I've still got bills. So the first thing I did was I worked at Kohl's for Christmas, right? Here I am with a master's degree, working at Kohl's for ten bucks an hour, but I did it so if I could figure out if I liked retail or not. Didn't like retail, okay? So then what's the next step? I went into car sales. I've been in sales for forty years and I decide, okay, I'm going to go into car sales. I would have never thought I was in car sales and I wish I never got into it, to be honest with you. Did it for eighteen months, worked sixty hours a week, hardly made any money and took crap from everybody, took, from everybody and including the sales guys that you were working with, okay? So what's my next step? I start student, substitute teaching, okay? You only need a college degree to substitute teach. So that's what I've been doing since September now, is substitute teaching and I enjoy it. I can pick my time, I can work four days a week, I can work three days a week, two days a week, whatever, okay? But I'm not making near what I was making before. So what do you have to do? You have to look at cutting things, okay? So last week, between renegotiating my Sirius FM contract, relooking at my homeowner's policy and ending up with a better policy than I had before, and then finally cutting the cord on the cable, I saved nine hundred and thirty-three. saved $933 in it in one day. Okay. So that's, I'm okay with taxes for next year. Okay. Between the school property taxes and all those other things, but I'm still going to be hurting paying my bills. So what do you do? This morning, I applied for social security early. Right? Because I don't know if I wait till 66 or I wait till 70, first of all, if I'm going to be around or if social security is going to be around. So why not take the money now and be able to live still comfortably? Okay. So you have to always look at those things. You know, budgeting and things is a moving target, like you just said. You know, today, it could be a $30 million budget. Well, tomorrow, something could happen or two weeks from now that it all of a sudden has to turn into a $31 million budget or it drops to a 28, whatever it might, what it is. So you always have to look at that. But a lot of the things that Mr. Callahan said, I agree with, is that you have this vision of doing these great things. I'd love to take my grandkids on a vacation to Disney World every year. Not going to be able to do it. Maybe every five years we'll be able to do it. So you have to cut back on things that maybe you were planning for in the future. And one of the biggest things is, and I'll let you guys know the date, but if anybody would like to go to the school board meeting when they start talking about their budget and their levy, which is probably going to be before December because that's when they have to agree to it, you're welcome to join me. You guys can sit in the audience and be on the other side of me now talking because there is a lot of spending in the school districts that is unnecessary. And it's difficult to get people to listen to you because they take it personally. Just like you, they're volunteers. They go through everything and they think they're doing everything okay. But even from the four or five, well, three months now that I've been in the schools and I'm working two different school districts, not Batavia, I can see the spending's off the roof now. So you need to have people involved, talking to the school board. Now, you're looking at now, I had hoped that there'd be 50 people here. Okay. I'm one out of 23,000 people in Batavia. Yet if you raise taxes and the newspaper hits it tomorrow that you're going to think about raising taxes, everybody will be yelling and screaming. And I always say, well, where were you when they voted on it? So it's a tough job. You guys had a great discussion tonight. I will ultimately agree with what you do and what you decide on, but I'm also always going to question you. Because again, as a citizen, that's my right. I don't take it personally. I've had some discussions with Laura, okay, that she probably uncomfortable on some things. And, but I just want to know, why? And unfortunately, not too many people in today's age get involved in anything. You know, they just don't show up for anything, but they'll be able to complain. So, okay, guys, thanks. Thanks for your discussion tonight.
Thank you.
I think Bob said something that I noted last week and I commented to the mayor as we were leaving. It's not personal and nobody in here takes it personal. We all want the same thing. We all have different ideas on how we get there. We've had lively spirited debates and we all go out laughing, smiling and holding hands. It's a great feeling.
You're holding hands?
You were in Mexico.
You weren't here for a campaign.
He was, he was out there.
I was out there for a campaign.
Oh, man.
How did I know that was going to come up tonight? I guess now we get to make decisions on, do we want to leave it the way it is, what we directed staff to do last week, leave the cuts in, stay at the same funding level that we had, 70, 73.3 cents. And I think that was what, option B? Plus the 50,000 in cuts and leave it at that. Vote there or if anybody has any changes they'd like to make.
Well, I would say, we've had discussion here. Let's see if, where are we staying with that? I would make a motion to go to the additional tax of 110,000, making it 74.6, which is a $12, $12 increase.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I guess, does that leave us? Where does that put us on notice or anything else that?
That would not require a black box notice.
And that would, was that the raise to the cap?
No. Right now, the, the tax cap, it would be about 250,000.
Okay.
It just happens to be about the same amount that would keep the rate. Because even under the tax cap, the rate can increase depending on the growth in EAV. But in this case, that's about what it would be. And it would keep the rate the same.
And can we indicate if the, the motion includes the 50,000 in cuts or not?
Can I, a port of order? Since we, we already did vote on it last week, would we have to do a motion to reconsider by any of the people that voted yes? Because otherwise, we're voting for the same thing. We've already voted for it. We already voted to give what it was and the direction to do the 50,000. So that's, that's still the standing, that's still the standing, the direction that we voted on and gave. So.
The motion that, the motion that we voted on last week is the same as I'm making. Is that what you're saying?
No. We would have to reconsider if you want to revote on, on the issue again. And it would have to be someone that voted yes.
Move to reconsider.
Second. Can I second?
Yes.
So you were part of the group that said yes to what we voted on last week as well as, I guess it just has to be the one making the motion.
Right. And so the motion to reconsider would be, you would vote yes if you want to re-vote and no if you're good with your vote from last
Last week.
And then I abstain? Because I wasn't part or?
No, you can vote.
Yeah.
I love when we're doing this without having legal sitting here. I believe that that's right. I think you're right.
What you suggested was much cleaner. Thank you. You're right.
I think that's right. That's the way to do it is we have to reconsider it first.
It's your arch vote.
Why do you got to bring that up?
That's
I'm getting beat up a lot here.
Okay. So we have a motion to reconsider our, our vote from last week on the budget.
So is everybody, but is everybody clear that if you vote no, you're staying the same?
Stay with what we had last week.
Right.
If you vote yes, you're going to want to change something.
Right.
So we have a motion by Beck, second by McFadden.
And then if you didn't, didn't vote last week.
What?
Apparently I can, I can vote. Did you, you left by that point. You were wrong.
Right.
So the choices here, so to be clear for you, if you're okay with what was voted on last week, which was the no tax increase down at the bottom, or I should say, no rate increase down at the bottom with $50,000 worth of cuts and the rest of it coming from reserves, then you would vote no, you're okay with it. If you want to change it to whatever we decide to change it to, if we change, you would vote yes on this motion.
It's not, it's not no taxes. We did do a $250,000 levy increase.
Right. That's why I said the rate. It's no change, virtually no change to the rate. It might be four decimal points out. It might be a change, but it's no change.
Yeah. And to be clear, a yes vote here doesn't necessarily change anything. It just reopens the discussion.
Ready for this?
Pro call.
Beck?
Aye.
Knapp?
No.
Shantet?
Aye.
Salvati?
No.
Wolf?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
No.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
No.
Serone?
No.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
No.
And Rosado?
No.
We have six a's, eight nays. Motion down.
Okay. So that means we're sticking with what we had last week.
I appreciate the discussion. So thank you for reconsidering.
And then I would just like to make sure that you understand that the city hall capital funding is in the budget. And I just want to find out if everyone's okay with leaving it in or if there is direction to take it out.
And we're taking it out of reserves.
That's correct.
Right. We're funding that out of the reserves is what we directed.
And as much as I don't like doing that, I would definitely support it because I believe it's a life safety issue for city employees. And so just to put that on the record, that that's important to do.
I think, and piggybacking on that, I think it's not only life safety. I think it's quality of services, both for our employees and for the public. And I also think it's a wise investment in the building that we do own. There's been a lot of, call it, cackle on social media about it. And even in public, I've been lambasted a few times lately. And I think that's something to remind people is that, I guess maybe we have to have the mayor come back with some numbers of what he thinks we originally put into this building and where we are in total from what we spent over the last 40 years on this building. I can't imagine what it would cost us to replace the police department and the administration side of this building for, you know, two cities within five miles of here have spent $20 million plus on police stations. So for us to put, even if it's $2 million into this building, to make it more useful and safe, I think is a wise use of the resources that we have.
You're talking the wastewater treatment plant all over again. Easy.
Oh.
In cost.
In cost plus finding a place to put it. And yes, I'm sure that everybody's got their opinion on where you could put this and what this building is actually worth if you're going to try to sell it. And what would happen if somebody wanted to try to come in here and develop it? We do have to remember this sits within a TIF district. So first of all, any improvements that would be made to it, at least for the rest of the life of the TIF, would never, well, it's a would never, would not be seen as property tax increases. Eventually, we'll be able to see that, if that was what we did with this.
Alan, one other thing I'd want to add, you know, obviously, if you go forward with that, the council's going to have to approve and review everything that's going to be done here before it gets, you know, brought all the contracts and everything else. So you'll have plenty of chances to have more input and more meetings like this and more discussions as to whether or not you want to do this or that or whatever of the whole project.
Absolutely. It's only a placeholder in the budget. It's not approving any, any work at all.
I didn't have any money here and this will all be, I'm sure, a healthy discussion as we've had here tonight on the part of the city council.
All right. Then what I will do is place a budget resolution on the agenda for COW next week so that you can have one final discussion on it. And then we'll plan on having it on the city council meeting for December 2nd. We'll also have the tax levy ordinances at COW next week so that you can have that discussion as well, based on the information here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
We will move on to project status.
I attended an interesting meeting this morning. It was hosted at the St. Charles Public Library and it was the tri-city collaboration, talking about making application to become, have the designation of a dementia-friendly area. Some individual cities have pursued this distinction. And I commend the city of St. Charles for leading this effort. I think this would be a great thing for our tri-cities to pursue. It not only takes account of the types of services that we have in each of our communities that serve our aging community and those affected by dementia and Alzheimer's, but it also reaches out to the businesses within our three cities to teach them how to better serve that community as well. So it was not only a meeting of representatives from city government and from, Kent County Sheriff was there as well, but there were numerous organizations and also living communities that serve the dementia population and also the area hospitals that provide services. So in all, there were probably a couple of dozen people at the meeting and it will be ongoing. And we hope to make an application for that designation early next year. There's a tremendous amount going on in community and economic development. There is the owner and developer of the 150,000 square foot light industrial building at 1858 Fabian Parkway notified us that that building will be ready for occupancy within the next 60 days. So that really went up fast. Also, we're happy to report that the 15 acre commercial property site at Prairie Commons is, the owner developer has selected CBRE to begin marketing for sale and development, that commercial property. So that's another very good thing that's happening there. Staff has reviewed the direction that council has provided with regard to short-term rentals. And we are going to be bringing some proposals for changes to those regulations to the committee of the whole the next couple of meetings. The fire department has been sending correspondence to our local businesses on how to protect their sprinkler systems during these, you know, rapid temperature drop situations. And then also in information systems, we've had multiple discussions with vendors concerning the council chamber video system. This was prompted by the BATV improving and installing some new equipment, which really helped with their feed from this meeting and all the different presentations that they do. But it allowed the live streaming on YouTube, which I think was a really important development. But one of the things that we lost in that transition because of the age of the projectors that we have in this room, they're actually going on 12 years old, is that BATV is not able to pick up the feed from such an old device as that and as part of their broadcast. So they end up having to kind of aim the camera at the screen. And of course, after 12 years, that resolution is, phew. So we saw some demonstrations of the, the new equipment that we're going to have in here. And it's part of transparency, right? I mean, being able to easily observe while you're watching our presentations at home and being able to tell what are the numbers that are up there on the screen or as people sit in the audience. So we're not only going to improve the resolution of these projectors and the size of the screens that we have in the front and on the side of the room, but we're also going to put a monitor up in the, the center of the seating area back there, which will help with the back rows, should there be someone sitting there, you know, sometimes there are.
Chief, chief would be able to see it.
And then also those times when we have a full room, the full room full of chairs, those people who are off to the side will also be able to participate. So we think that this is a really important improvement to make. The other thing that I'd like to bring up is, of course, we will resume leaf collection as soon as we can see them.
Could be April.
It could be April. They stay next week. But like, really, as soon as we can see the leaves, even if they're frozen, it's more difficult. It is really a lot more difficult to pick them up when they're frozen, but we just have to. So we will, we'll be out doing that. Other than that, if you have any quest, oh, I want to bring up, just a few hours away, in 10 hours, we will be have, hosting 40 people are coming to our small business information forum, including a couple of our aldermen, our, have RSVP'd that they will be joining us as well. And so we really look forward to, it is a mixture of names that I am not familiar with. So I do not think that they are current business owners, but are looking to become business owners in the city of Batavia. And then also some well-established businesses. And so look forward to the conversation tomorrow and an opportunity to And so look forward to the conversation tomorrow, uh, and an opportunity to introduce all of the different services that the city provides to encourage people to locate businesses here, as well as give them a preview of what the processes are and, uh, what the expectations are in terms of the timing of all of those things and an opportunity to ask questions. And at the end of that presentation, we're going to hand out cards to all of the participants and we want to solicit some opinion back from them that, um, I would like to start a business in the city of Batavia or I'd like to grow my business in Batavia. Um, but this is holding me back and I, I want them to write down on a card, what is it that's holding them back from starting their business today and, or growing their business today? It doesn't even have to be something that is under the span of control of the city of Batavia because we've got some great partners in this, uh, program tomorrow in the chamber of commerce and in our main street organization. And, um, together we hope to collaborate and remove those barriers because, um, as much as we appreciate how many new businesses that we have seen come to our city over the last couple of years, um, I'm sure that it could be more and we want to pave the way for that.
Any questions for Laura?
Okay. Do we have any others? Tony?
Have one. Um, just wanted to share with you that I had an awesome meeting today at, uh, Batavia High School. Steve Vassillion and I went over and met with, with Bronco Meeks and Brian Gamblin, uh, the building trades two program about the, the tiny shops, uh, shared the plans that Steve's been working on with them. Uh, they're, they're fully on board and excited about it. Uh, we've also, um, Steve has, um, volunteered to, uh, not only did he do the work on the, the plans and he's working on that, uh, but he's going to work with two students, uh, architectural drawing students to have them design, uh, make further designs on, uh, some of the other shell, uh, shalleys or tiny houses. So, uh, it was a very productive meeting and, uh, glad to report that the, the school district, the high school is fully on board with this.
Did Bob talk with you yet?
Uh, yes, I spoke with him this morning.
About the date for coming before us?
Yes. He said he would like to postpone that.
To December 3rd. He's going to come before us, uh, to Bob Hanson. Give the rundown where they're at and kind of the timeline.
I think this has turned into a really good community project that not only encompasses something down for downtown or economic development, but also brings in the school district and the building trades class, other businesses. I mean, I think this is a really good thing for the community as a whole to have so many different people tied into it. Any others?
A move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Have a good evening.